Good evening, everyone. Today, October 22nd, 2024 at 6:00 PM, I call for order. Please judge me for the place allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rock call, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Malamofu.
Here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And Trustee Teder.
Here.
We have a forum this evening.
Good. Thank you. So we need a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'm sorry.
I have a question.
I'd like to amend the agenda.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Ron.
That's okay.
I'd like to amend the agenda by adding item M2, request to enter into closed session pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268H1.
Support.
All right. Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion here, and we approve the agenda. Board, public announcement. Any members of the board who would like to address? Clerk Newick?
Trick or treating, that's the hot topic right now, isn't it? Will take place on Thursday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 7:00 in Independence Township. We want to remind residents to take extra caution on the roads and be aware of children crossing the street, especially during the trick or treat hours. Early voting also begins for Independence Township residents and the city of the village of Clarkston this Saturday, October 26th, and runs through Sunday, November 3rd. We're in partnership with Oakland County. Registered voters, as I mentioned, within the township and the city of the village may vote at Brady Lodge, at Bay Court Park, which is 6970 Andersonville Road, or Waterford Oaks Activity Center, which is located at 2,800 Watkins Lake Road. Early voting hours every day, both locations will be 8:30 to 4:30, except for Thursday. The hours are noon to eight, and that's all they have.
Thank you, Clerk Newick. Anyone else? Dostina Lamato.
This comes up every year, and I'm going to talk over Carrie's trick or treating. The 6:00 to 7:00 is just suggested hours, and if your neighborhood sticks to that, it's up to you, but nobody can dictate when you turn your light off. So if you know other areas, feel free to trick or treat downtown for that hour and go to other places after.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor.
Trustee Chumtad.
Thank you. This Thursday, the 24th of October, the Rotary Club of Clarkston is hosting its annual Taste of the Holidays. It's a wine, whiskey, and beer tasting. Wardine's Nursery is generously, once again, offering up their entire greenhouse. They work hard all day to clear the entire greenhouse for us. We set it up with tables and chairs. We'll have about 10 food vendors from the area that have generously, are generously donating food, and we'll have wines from around the world. We'll have craft whiskey and bourbon, and we'll also have craft beer for tasting. It's $55 a ticket, 6:30 to 8:30 this Thursday, October the 24th. You can look me up to get tickets. I always have them on me, and it's a wonderful annual tradition, and of course, all the proceeds go to directly benefit all the great work the Rotary Club of Clarkston does for the area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving on. Public comments. Anyone, member of the audience who would like to address to the board? Please, Lauren.
Hi, Lauren Rinke, Public Information Officer for the township. My address is 5139 Oak Park Drive. I put a survey request out on the table. Looks like some people grabbed them. There's a QR code if you'd like to take our survey. I'm trying to gauge the residents' main modes of communication and how you prefer to receive information, so if you could give me some feedback, I would greatly appreciate it. If you're online, you can find this link on our social media as well, Facebook and Instagram. If you would prefer to do this in a print survey and not do a QR code, you can come see me after the meeting, or you can email me at L R I N as in Nancy K E at I N D T W P dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address directly to the board? Please state your name and address.
Larry Hess, 5951 Flemings Lake Road. I'd like to take this moment just to recognize the Parks and Recreation for their Friendly Forest event that they had. We had over 600 children show up. Lisa and her staff, Liz, Caitlin, Tim, my staff, John and Jim, phenomenal job of setting it up, and if anybody doesn't realize what a good event that is, you should really look at it next year. They did a phenomenal job, so I just wanted to give them their recommendations.
Thank you, Larry. Good job. Anyone online that would like to address to the board of trustees? Okay. Okay. You have five minutes, sir.
Pardon?
State your name and address.
Hello, my name is Darwin Moore, 9165 E V Road, Clarkston, Michigan. I would like to tell the board what a good job I think you did last meeting, representing the people and putting a stop on the development that was going, or recommended going at Dixie Highway and Big Lake Road. I think you did a great job by at least not letting that go through at this time and handling the crowd the way you did, so I give you commendation. I thought you did a good job for doing that. Thank you. Also, I am running as an independent for Township Supervisor, and there's two weeks left as of today till voting. You mentioned the early voting and everything. I would encourage all residents to vote, exercise your right to vote. Regardless who wins or loses, I'm glad people have a choice in this election, and I think it sends a strong message to the current board that people want choices and things happen, so I don't know. We must have 36,000 residents. I don't know if those are all registered voters, or if that's the whole thing, but the more people that vote, the more accurate our representation will be, so I would encourage people to get out and vote. Mr. Hess gave some commendations to his folks that ran that, and I would like to say that Independence Township does have some very good workers in the township. It is a good township. People want to be here for a reason. The reason that we filled this hall up so many times is because they do care. They're passionate about what's going on, and as elected officials, you work for the people here. You need to listen to them, take in their viewpoints and everything, and you should at least address their issues when you're up there representing them. So again, I'm just asking the public, please get out and vote, pay attention to what's going on, do your due diligence, vote for who you think is going to be your best leadership, and then let's go forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. We now have public hearing. Presentations and reports. We have presentations from the McCord property, from the Clarkston Community Garden, and the PR SAC members. As you know, for a long time, our person rec, I mean, half the community wasn't active until we acted a few years ago, and that involved a lot of local residents that sign up, and this committee have been very engaging. I know Trustee Chumtad and myself, I'm part of this community. We have a lot of people, and we have, I know Heidi Warrington, which is the president of this community, have been working hard with Linda, who is going to make the presentation today, and Lisa as well. I think Larry Hess is also in the committee as well, and Mr. Tom Tillman as well. Overall, this is something that I want to bring to, this presentation bring awareness for the township board about what are the goals, or what are the possibilities, or what we can do to utilize this park, because we actually have four parks. Most people believe it's just Clintonwood Park, Sacha Bay Plains, and Bay Court, but actually, we have four parks, and the fourth one is actually McCord Park. It's across, actually, across the street of San Francisco House. So this presentation, I think, is going to be very important for us to know where we are and what we can do with this. So Lisa.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. That was a great introduction by Supervisor Aliaga. I'm going to introduce Linda Zabarcha from our Parks Recreation and Seniors Advisory Committee, who has been working diligently with our department over the last year, I would say. We started with some conversations, what would it take to bring our garden back to life, to reopen the McCord property? She's been working with other members of the advisory committee. Heidi Warrington is our chair of the committee. She's on, joined us online tonight. So tonight's presentation will lay out the roadmap of the maintenance work and the support and resources that will be needed to reopen the garden, in hopes to do that in the spring of 2025, and we felt it was imperative to keep the board well informed and up to date on our intentions. So I'm going to turn it over to Linda, who will give tonight's presentation.
Thank you, Lisa. I will change your slides for you.
I would like, I would like to make an opening statement as well.
Okay.
Okay, this is Heidi Warrington? So Heidi?
Yes, so as chairman of the Parks Recreation and Seniors Advisory Board, I fully support the resurrection of Clarkston's new legacy, the Clarkston Community Garden. So this initiative will not only reconnect our community, but also provide vital benefits to the physical and mental well-being of our residents. So community gardens have been shown to reduce stress, promote mental health, and offer an opportunity to slow down and connect with nature, something we all need to do in today's fast-paced world. Gardening provides a therapeutic environment where people can relax, find purpose, and foster a sense of belonging. In addition to its mental health benefits, the garden will supply fresh produce for those in need, provide opportunities for education, and create a space for people of all ages to come together. I urge the board to approve this initiative, which will enrich the lives of our residents and strengthen our commitment to promoting health and wellness in Independence Township. So let's bring this garden back and create a sanctuary that benefits both the mind and the body.
Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you for your support.
Thanks, Heidi, and thanks for the introduction, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you to the board for letting us have some time on your agenda this evening. I am going to, as Lisa and Heidi alluded to, talk to you a little about discussions that we've had as an advisory board, and I'm sorry, I've got my back against the audience here, but, and just give you some feedback on what our proposed plan is. Hopefully, we'll have your support behind us as well. So we're going to start off by talking a little bit about the historical background of the McCord property, and then we'll move on to the current state of the property. We have, as I mentioned earlier, some recommendations on what to do with the McCord property, so we'll investigate that, and then, you know, why do we want to do this? You know, why? You know, the property is there now, why do we want to do this? So there's some rationalization for reinstating the garden. There are some responsibilities that we would expect the township to take on. They're minor. The whole purpose of the community garden is that the community of renters maintain it, so there are a few things, though, that we wouldn't have access to equipment to that we would need the township to do. And then, again, we'll be looking for your support. And then in the package that you receive, there are backup slides to further give you an understanding of, like, the fundraising that we want to do, what a garden manager would do, et cetera. So the McCord property is located on Pine Knob Road, north of Clarkston Road. It's on a piece of property that's about 33 acres. It's primarily wooded. It's a glacial rain piece of property, so it's very hilly with steep hills, and then the kettle ponds are at the bottom, so it's not a site where you can actually put in a tennis court or something like that. There's a couple of acres of flat land where the garden existed in the past, but otherwise, you've got the forest there and the ponds. The property was donated by the McCord family. They had a history of farming in that area. My understanding is that they were dairy farmers, so they donated that piece of property to the township in 1998. And then in 2004 and 2005, Bob McGowan started Plant Row, and basically, it was plant a row of vegetables, take care of it, and then take it to the food bank. So that's what he did for two years. And then he went and established, what the heck is the name of his farm?
Bitter Bush.
Bittersweet. Bittersweet, thank you very much, behind Independence Elementary School. And then in 2008, the community garden was established, and it was established as part of a master gardener's program. As part of graduating from that program, you have to have a project. So an individual working with the MSU extension, another individual started the Clarkston Community Garden. And I always make the assumption that everybody knows what a community garden is, but not everybody does. So basically, it's when you have a plot of land that you rent to a gardener, and they can produce food for their family, their friends, grow flowers, but then you usually also have other beds that are used to grow food to donate to the food bank. Excuse me. So, and as part of that, as I just alluded to earlier, as a commitment to renting your space, you're also required to donate hours. So hours might be weed whacking around the perimeter of the garden fence, it might be mowing paths, it might be repairing paths, it could be working in the donation gardens, picking, weeding, or delivering the food, but that's part of the program. And then in 2019, the main driver of that community garden left, so the township provided a gardener, master gardener, to manage the garden, but unfortunately, when COVID came, the garden got closed. So current state of the garden, that's the well that supplies water for the garden. Right now, if you go up there, it doesn't look like there was ever anything there, as far as the garden goes. There's a deer fence that had surrounded the perimeter of it. It's down almost, I would say, probably 80%. There were several entrances. Two of them are down. The main entrance is down, but there's one gate that's still in place. We have a bulletin board up there. We can use that to acknowledge sponsors, donations, activities at the garden, et cetera. I think that's probably been vandalized, if I had to guess what happened to it. And then there's a shed that's there for storage purposes, and it's just falling apart because basically, it hasn't been attended to. The other issue with that park up there is that it's full of invasive species. So it's beautiful. Like, we just got through with the Canadian thistle blooming, and it's just a sea of purple, beautiful, beautiful, beautiful piece of property. However, it's an invasive species, and it's all, it's all over the place. There's autumn olive up there, bittersweet, you name it. There's a bunch of invasive species. And part of our, you know, probably what we should be thinking about when we think about our parks is helping control stuff like that. We have an irrigation system. I've checked half of it. I know that half is working. The faucets need to be repaired, though. There are PVC and plastic knobs, so they're broken and things like that, but it does work. The well works, the electric for the well works. The plots themselves that the gardeners use were delineated with boards. Most of those boards are not usable anymore. They're gone or they're rotted, so those need to be replaced. And then nature's just doing its thing up there, right? You know, you don't take any action with a piece of land like that. It's going to revert back to a meadow, you know, and then eventually, the trees will move in, and it's that whole natural succession process. And these are just some pictures of what I was talking about, the deer fence you can see on the far left. In the middle is the Canadian thistle. We have lots and lots of wildlife up there. Not all of them do we want in the garden. You can see the bulletin board in the sign-in sheet for volunteer hours there, and then the shed. At this point in time, those were taken, like, the one of the shed in the spring, so right now, the weeds are in most places much taller than I am. So the advisory board came up with a recommendation during our May 2024 advisory board meeting, and we decided that the recommendation we had was to maintain the property as a community garden with future paths of recreation. We'll talk about what is paths of recreation? What does that mean in just a couple of minutes? We'd like to see the garden reinstated in 2025 in the spring, and possibly, in the future, also add some nature trails to the wooded area, because again, you can't really develop it, but it'd be a shame not to utilize that property. It's a great place for kids to come out, poke around in the ponds, learn about amphibians, learn about the animals in the woods, that type of thing. So we should try to utilize the property in its entirety if we can. So the goals we have are, as Jose alluded to, is it is one of our parks, right? And we need to acknowledge it as a park and utilize it and maintain it as one of our parks. So one of the things that we would like to do is minimize the burden of work and financial impact to the township. So that's why the garden itself is maintained by the gardeners. We can just talk about the few things that we need the township to help with us in a minute, but it's basically something the gardeners would take care of. And then the funding part of it, like, we need all kinds of things. We need hoses. Can't have a garden without having hoses for people to water their gardens. We need to do some soil testing. So what we would like to do is fund a lot of those things through fundraising, and then some of the bigger projects do grant applications. What we want to do is have a full, part-time, excuse me, year-round garden manager position to get this back on track, starting in January the 1st, and if that position is established and fulfilled, then the Rotary Club is willing to donate $5,000. Very generous donation, thank you. And that'll help pay for things like the deer fence. It's a costly endeavor, but the Rotary International will match half of that donation, giving us another $2,500. So it's, you know, a nice chunk of money to get started on those things that are basic requirements for a garden. So some of the benefits, primarily for the Independence Township residents, although we would welcome other people, of course, into our community. There has been expressed desire to reopen that garden. People have approached me, I've collected names, they've approached other people that are part of the advisory committee as well, and expressed interest in reopening the garden. The donation plots are seriously needed in this community. It's, you know, we think of ourselves as being pretty affluent, but there are an awful lot of people who are in need in Oakland County, and they feed 15,000 families a week, so they are in seriously need of food all the time, and the availability of fresh produce is one of the things that's hardest for them to get, right? And so, and it's probably one of the more expensive things that the families in need can't afford. So to be able to grow this food for our community is a great way of giving back. We would generate a little bit of revenue from the runners, so that offsets some small costs, and it would also open up offerings that the township has for recreational opportunities. We talked about the garden, but in a minute, we can talk about some of the other things that we could do there. And it shows that by utilizing that property, that we have a commitment to maintaining that property for the benefit of the residents. So in 2024, we'd like to have a gala fundraising event. We've got some great experienced people who are willing to help us with that activity and get us started. We would like to move the entrance gate back away from Pine Knob Road. There is like a cattle gate that enclose, you know, is at the entrance of the garden, and if you want to open that gate, your back end of your car is in Pine Knob, so, and it's at the bottom of a hill, the visibility is not great, so we'd like to move that back because it's a safety issue. On November 11th and 12th, we have Impact Weekend in our community, just like every other year. We're planning on participating in that, so I'm going to...
Second and third?
Yeah, it's a whole weekend, but we will be working in the garden on the 3rd to clean it up. So when I say clean up, a lot of people, at some point, the deer fence went into disrepair, and people started putting up fences around their plots. There's all kinds of T-posts and stuff that are in there. The garden is not, we can't even start it until we get that debris out of there. So for Impact Weekend on the 3rd, we have a, we'll advertise it, if you want to call it, and a sign-up genius that is affiliated with Impact Weekend, where people can sign up and volunteer to help us from 10 to 3:00. So there's my pitch for Impact Weekend. So we'll get that debris out of there, then we can mow it. Initially, when we put this presentation together, we were hoping that we would have the deer fence activity occurring on that weekend, but due to how things have progressed up to this point in time, we're going to have to save that probably till the spring. Fix the faucets this year if we can, if not, no, next year, and then mow and till the garden, and that's something we need the township to help us with. They do have the mowers, and they do have the tillers. We want to do this in the fall, so that, there's tons of thistles in there, long root, then a lateral root, and if you just till in the spring, you're chopping it up, it's going to settle back down, and it's going to grow, at least in the winter. If we mow it and till it, then those roots are going to get killed by rotting over the winter. They can't establish themselves in the winter. So this is a little bit small, I apologize for that, but then in 2025, we'd like to continue our donate, or, excuse me, our fundraising activities, so possibly getting a push mower. We'd like to get the children's play area fixed up so that if parents come with their kids, they need to give them something to do, they have a place to go and play. Like I mentioned earlier, we'd like to apply for grants. One of the thoughts is for a polytunnel. The polytunnel can be used throughout most of the season, except for when it's very, very cold in the winter, unless you bring in heaters, but we could do things like weddings, family gatherings, business meetings. It's become very popular to have activities like that in the woods, on farms, you name it, it's become very, very popular, and you can control the heating with a polytunnel just by raising and lowering the sides and such, so it's not 12 months a year, but we could get good use out of it. And then, of course, we could use it for a residential tent. Polytunnels are used for raising plants, so it'd be an area where we could have a section where we're raising seedlings, you know, for the garden, for the donation plots. We could have classes in there for kids so they learn how to grow stuff. We could have classes in there for kids so they learn how to grow stuff. Or we could have things like teaching people how to care for the, for the grounds that they plant. You know, how to do composting, that thing, soil improvement. So there's multi-purposes that we could use a polytunnel for, have classes in there. So in the spring, one of the first things we need to do is till again. And then on Impact Weekend, we could then put the, have the volunteers put the boundaries back in for the garden. It's, it's a pretty big activity. And I forgot to mention what we would also do this past, in November, is take down the deer fence. We can't, we can't reuse what's left there, the poles are sagging and the fence is so torn, we can't reuse it, so we're going to remove it. And then, of course, open the garden, we'll have the plots, food donation garden, maybe have a little ribbon cutting ceremony up there. We'd like to partner with the Clarkston Farm and Garden Club, they have a garden walk every year that's a fundraiser for them. And this will give us the opportunity to get some exposure with the community, show them what we're doing. You know, they'll see the food donation plots and get them interested. And we can have, you know, notifications on future activities to start generating interest in the garden. So the garden, the community garden itself would be the backbone of that property, but we could build on it so that it becomes more inclusive. So if you're not a gardener and you want to have a family event though, in a garden, there you go, it's there. You know, if you've had your kids in the garden all day and they're driving you nuts, you can go take them for a walk in the woods afterwards. So we want to make a, a, a place where people come together from the community and are able to have a good time and have various activities for them to be engaged with. We could also, so what I'm also leading up to is working with the township also on creating those new classes that I talked about. For children and parents, it could be gardening, it could be yoga in the garden. I mean, yoga in the garden has just gone nuts, you know, downtown Detroit have a yoga in the garden with goats. So it's, it's just crazy how people have become very interested since COVID in being outside. I mentioned we'd like to clean up the children's activity area, but also create a children's garden so they can actually learn. I've helped put in community gardens before and I've watched children and I've just found it so hard to believe that some of them never seen a worm. They have no idea that there's insects living in the ground. Some of them don't know that when they get the crate of plants, that the part you see above the ground is not planted. It's the part that's in the ground with the roots that goes into the ground. So it's a great opportunity to get kids to really understand where their food comes from, how, you know, instill things like Heidi was indicating with the healthy living style such as your diet. Farm-to-table dinners, another opportunity. There's, the DNR has funding available, they will offer it if you have a pollinator garden. It would mean we'd probably have to remove like the invasive species that are up there in a designated area. And they would provide, my understanding is, the tools and the equipment and the knowledge to help you get that garden established. But then leave the rest of it as is, because that area is very important to songbirds, for example, that are, need open areas. They're not, you know, wood, wood birds, they need a field to get their food and their nests and that type of thing. It's a great opportunity for, again, to start pulling other areas of the community in. We could do things like work with high schools carpentry class and have them do some of the repair works that we need. We could work with Eagle Scouts, they have to have a project to become an Eagle Scout, so there's things up there that they could help us with. And then a lot of different organizations require volunteer hours. So our honor students need a place to volunteer. I know some of the sports teams require volunteer hours, and master gardeners to keep their certification have to have volunteer hours. So there's just a whole realm of possibilities, starting the garden is one thing, but if you think again about using the entire property, there's all kinds of things that we could do. And then in two thousand twenty-six, we were thinking that we'd like to implement an accessibility plan so that everyone can get up to the garden, work in the garden if they want, so they have access. Maybe we get some raised beds, you know, that are wheelchair height, so people who are in wheelchairs can actually garden. Or people who are, as they're aging are finding it harder to get down there, like myself. It's just nice for some people to have a higher area to work in. And then apply for grants, you know, if you, if we go down this path with this development, we have to have public restrooms. I mean, we can get away with a porta potty for a while, but long-term that's not going to work, especially if you start thinking about, you have a facility where people can come and have a family picnic. Nobody likes going in those porta potties. Okay, so rationalization, I think we talked about everything that's on this side, slide. What we would need from the township, one time and some ongoing. So one time, we might need some assistance with the installation of deer fence, it depends upon the volunteers. If we get people who are carpenters and know how to do that kind of work, then our reliance on the township lessons. But we might need help with like drilling the holes for the posts. Move the garden entrance further away, we talked about that. We need a numerical identification system for the plots so the gardeners can find their plots. Fix the faucets, one-time expense. A sign would be nice, there's a little tiny sign at the entrance now. People going down the road aren't even going to see it, they're just going to fly by it. So to have a sign up there for people to know that there is indeed a park there, and also for people who are visiting first time, it'll make it easier to find because it is not apparent where the entrance is, it's a very low-profile entrance. We would need a dumpster, there's one up there now. If we can get everything out of there, this debris, we won't need another dumpster. I mentioned the tilling of the garden. And then funding them year-round, part-time, seasonal garden manager and a small operating budget. So ongoing, we talked about the mowing for the parking area and the entrance road going up to the main part of the garden. Providing a porta potty until we have something else. Any maintenance that's needed on the entrance road, it's got some potholes in it right now. I imagine as there's more traffic on it, it's probably going to be a consistent problem. Because I remember a long time ago when I was a gardener there, there were potholes there. And the township would help with registration of events, garden assignments, that kind of thing, and collecting the fees. And then also provide advertising and marketing support. You know, by that I mean, maybe it's a flyer, or maybe it's just updating the township's website, that type of thing. So we tried to put together some kind of cost so you'd have some idea of what we're talking about. And this is an estimate, we're not financial planners or anything like that. So the first thing that's on there is the wages for the part-time garden manager. On the bottom you see some other salary information. That was put in there as a FYI to the advisory committee. Obviously, that's a seasonal position, so it's going to be paid at the seasonal rate, not the rates that are listed on there. Electric is about two hundred bucks a year, the porta potty is during the season that we need it, it would probably cost about a grand. And then the operating budget is blank there because that is not something that the committee is to determine, right? That's the financial decision made by the township. One-time cost of sign, again, there's nothing in there for cost simply because if there was funding for a sign that's three feet, that's different than funding for a sign that's six feet, so another township decision. Faucets were estimated at two hundred, testing the soil, MSU has a testing soil program at fifty-two dollars. I was told that we cannot reuse that gate, so the township got an estimate for a new gate, which was almost four thousand dollars, which sounds like it's pretty high to me. If we needed a dumpster, again, it's five hundred dollars. And then the recommendation from the advisory committee for a starting budget was fifteen thousand dollars. You know, the lumber itself is going to be over five grand just for the plots. And the cost of hoses that we need, it's six hundred or eight hundred feet. So there's some significant costs that we have to cover through fundraising or a, or a small budget. So to round things up, I just want to again, thank you for your time and everybody else's time in the audience. We wanted to make you aware of what the plan is for the garden. Before I take any questions or answers, Jim is our liaison between our advisory committee and the board. I don't know, Jim, if you want to add anything like Heidi did, any comments?
Oh, absolutely, I was trying to figure out when would be the appropriate time to chime in. But as you can tell, Linda has no shortage of energy and passion for this. And I think it was maybe at my first meeting, as relatively new board member, liaison of the Parks Rec seniors committee. I was also incoming president for the Rotary Club. And at my discretion, I had about five thousand with a matching grant from the Road Degree Foundation. And I had some thoughts in my head, but she inspired me to the point where I said, this is my project. And well, looking back years ago to the spray park and, you know, optimist Rotarians and others, you know, even though this is a township asset, there are occasions where it calls for community support. And you talked a lot about the fundraising piece. So I'm really excited that in talking with, with Linda and Heidi that it looks like the, the deer fence, which is really mission number one, because without the deer fence, you don't have a garden. A deer will have a feast every, every opportunity. So it's, it's exciting to know the deer fence and, and some of the other tertiary items would be covered with that seventy-five hundred injection. And then, and I know, you know, we've had great support from, from Adam Kline, Lisa Christensen, Larry Hess, and Heidi is our, is our chairperson, they've all really been rallying behind support of this with, with Linda as the Energizer Bunny, and she's given dozens of hours, not, not throughout the year, but I think each week. It's incredible, and anybody that has, and on the board hasn't been out there to, to see the garden should because as she presented, it's, it's largely an overgrown field, there are a handful of people that are still gardening there, it's a very small group. But I think if the township, I'm assuming, is willing to maintain this, keep this property as part of our suite of park options, that it should be restored to the original luster that it was before COVID. And I'm really excited and I want to thank you for your passion and, and all that you've brought to this to create and reinvigorated this, what I think is an incredible asset for our township.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else in the board would like to add a comment or something about the presentation?
Maybe my question might be for Lisa, is this something that you're planning or is Adam having planned in the budget since we're doing the budget this year for next year?
Yes, so, yes, we have built in some operating dollars in, starting in twenty twenty-five as well as in our part-time wages to cover a garden manager, a part-time garden manager.
And I think I know this answer, but maybe the public might not know and you could fill them in. We do not have current park staff that visit that park and do anything, as it sounds, to that park.
Very minimally right now, right? So, I mean, like, we do do maintenance on some things out there annually, even though we have no gardeners and it's not open to the public, there's still some requirements of the property, so we're working on building that, building that in.
I wasn't here when it was around before and I'm very excited to have this be reborn, I guess is the best word for it. I am a gardener on a very small level and at some point in time I do hope and aspire to be a master gardener. So I'm very excited, I think this is a wonderful project, I'm looking forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you, I think Trustee Tutter said something and talked about like reinvigorating even us as a staff. And it wasn't just COVID that closed the garden, it was kind of a combination of losing our head volunteer who had dedicated since opening all of his time beyond, you know, the expectation, coupled with, you know, our, our limited resources that we experienced during COVID. But I'm just getting excited about it, again, as a staff too, it's been fun to go through and Linda is contagious. And I think at our height, we had probably close to a hundred gardeners out there at the height of the garden, so it has spectacular potential.
That's good, very good.
Really quick, great presentation, there's a lot of info, so if I missed it somewhere in all this, I apologize. But can you let me know about how much the renters pay for their, or does it...
You did not miss that.
Okay.
You know, I think it was thirty-five dollars for residents and forty in the past. I think that's something that we have to discuss because I've done a lot of research on other community gardens. There's one that's in the Detroit metro area that's charging like sixty-five dollars an hour. And when I talked to, not an hour, for a plot, and it's a, it's a raised bed, and I think it was like six by nine. And I'm like, what? But she thought it was great, you know, she thought it was a great price, but they also provide plants. You know, and it's a raised bed, a lot of people like raised beds like that. So we'll, I think we have to talk about it. My personal opinion is that, you know, in a ten by ten plot, you can grow a lot, but whatever you grow, you have to be able to justify in your mind the cost. And I would like to see it be accessible to people, right? So that it's not cost prohibitive. So I think we have to talk about it, do we raise it another five dollars? Maybe. I, you know, I think that's something we have to, we have to still figure out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dusty Marak?
I've got some comments, I'm a big supporter of it, I was a gardener there for years, I live right across the street, obviously. I've probably mowed that property personally myself fifty times. It, it's, it's a great, in its heyday, I was part of that, you know, with Jim and we did a lot of stuff. And, and, and so I know how great it can be because I was there, you know, when they, after they got it going. Couple of points, and I'm all over the place, I just took notes as you, you know, when I read the package. The, I'm a little concerned about the residents using mowers. The Township Parks and Rec used to mow the walkways and the big parking lot area, and then we did all the handwork. So that's one thing that I'm a little bit on the fence of having residents use something like a lawn mower, you know, but that's just my opinion. Because if they're going to be there with a zero turn, wouldn't take more than a few minutes to hit the trail, you know, hit between the, the boxes. Secondly, when I was there, we used, you know, we used to sell, I used to take the vegetables on Saturday morning to the farmer's market. And then we all took turns selling them. And then what was left over Saturday afternoon, the parks took and donated. So we were generating revenue for the garden by the vegetable sales. We could be a little more competitive than some of the other farmers, not to take away from their business, but, you know, we, we had a lot of product that we were trying to move, just crates and crates. Living across the street, it was easier for me for them to pick them on Friday and stick them in my garage and then run them out there Saturday for them, but, for the sale. And we did make, you know, a couple hundred, few hundred bucks a week on, on Saturday, volunteer, you know, not, because some of the hardest parts we had was the volunteer hours. Weeding and stuff, a lot of the guys did, but some of the women or older people that were there was a lot harder work because it got overrun because there wasn't enough volunteers, so it got to be overwhelming. But people could go to the farmer's market and work a few hours shifts selling vegetables that were maybe not able to do physical work. I don't know if you were going to bring that back as part of the fundraising effort or, or not? Because getting rid of the fresh vegetables every week is a job all in itself. You know, if you've got a large plot of community garden, so that was just one thing. There is a really ornate herb garden out there that's built of all these ornate rock sculptures and walkways and paths that, it disappeared probably five years after I started, or while I was still there, it was gone for five years, you know, right in front of the garden on the right there. That was a really beautiful thing, I think some Boy Scouts or the school did, or you, you did it back in the day.
Jim and I started that.
Okay, well, that was, that was really long ago. So that's there, you're definitely going to need a couple of dumpsters because the amount of debris that's in the, that, in the grass is amazing. Because I, I was over there earlier in the spring last year when they first got it going. And I was one of the last people out of there, living across the street, I go, you know, walk over there and stuff. And so there's a lot of the debris for sure hidden. The antique tractor club used to plow the field.
And a lot of that got picked up. So there's a smaller dumpster up there now, but I don't see them here, but there was another couple who used to work at the garden. And we filled that dumpster, we worked about half a day, and so there's lots been picked up, but there's still lots, we can't see it because of the weeds, so...
The borders of the old plots are going to generate a lot of four by four and four by six debris of rotten wood. of rotten wood. I mean, and a lot of that. Um, the, the antique tractor club used to plow the community part of it for the township back in the day. I don't know if that's something that I, uh, they would be interested in doing, you know, coming out and having an event. I don't know if anybody here is part of that. But I know there is a club in town, if it's still active. Uh, that might be a resource for you to get the big tilling done and then have an event where people could come see the antique tractors, uh, plow the field. Um, road repairs, that road's always been in bad shape. That's going to need like asphalt millings or something to fill those spots because it's constantly mud puddles. And it has been for the 16 years I've been there. It's never been stabilized. Uh, and the last thing, probably moving the gate. Is there a reason why we can't just pull the old posts up and slide them back and re-bury them again? Or do we want something a little more fancier than what's there than just a chain with a padlock?
I think it's, personally, I think it's fine. Um, you know.
I have the same gates at my property because it used to be tied to my property. So my gates at me and my driveway are the same ones. And I think that we could pull them up with a backhoe and just dig a hole and bury the concrete post again. Because they're pretty lightweight and they're just, you know, moving tees. But just if it comes down to three or $4,000, let me know. I'll see if we can't figure out a way to move them.
I talked to Adam about that because when he told me how much it was and it had to be replaced, I was like, you know, but I, it's, but I unfortunately wasn't there when the contractor, contractor came out there to give the quote. And for whatever reason, I don't know where if you were there or not, it seemed like it, there was a, a reason why they couldn't. I was thinking, just dig them up and dig another hole. So.
Well, that's what I was thinking too. So I don't, but other than that, I'm, I'm in full support of it. I would prefer if we did the mowing part because once that gets away from you, the mowing part.
You can't do it anymore.
It, it, the mood of the whole, um, and appeal of the whole garden then takes a dive. So I would be in favor of us having a guy spend an extra half hour out there and just.
Yeah, I don't think there was ever any intention to use like the zero turns or the heavy equipment. I think it was a push mower that she referenced.
No, I know.
And stuff like that. But definitely something for us to.
And then on my final note, something that I've been advocating for, for over a decade since I moved out there is a spot in that park that the equestrian residents could use as a morning stopover or watering hole for their horses. We don't have anything on that side of the township. We've got a ton of horses and barns over there. It requires a trough full of water. We already have a well. There's really no reason why we couldn't have an area where I see the people riding their horses up and down Pine Knob Road, which is crazy.
Yeah.
Um, but the animals, so you want them to get together. I could see residents saying, hey, I'll meet you at the garden at Saturday at nine for coffee. And give them a way to, um, exercise their horses and have a destination. Because we're, we have such a large amount of dirt road linkage to that area. So I would like you to consider, um, that amenity also.
Sure. And Linda, um, my two cents here is, um, first of all, thank you for putting together the presentation with Heidi and Lisa. I appreciate that a lot. And, uh, I, I know Stan has good comments. Everybody had something very important tonight. Uh, before I open to the public, um, today we have Adam Wright. He's right there in the back. Adam represent a consulting firm that represent the township. And then, and then if you don't mind, talk to him because he maybe can help you to identify some grant money that sometimes available in Lansing from the Nat, the Department of Natural Resources. Maybe something there that can help you because, you see, we have great ideas, but sometimes we need some funds. And I'm pretty sure that Adam maybe can be able to help you to identify some of that funding that may be available for, for the parks. And always is some funding. We talked about this before. So that's my only two cents for you. And thank you, Lynn, for everything. Okay, I guess.
One more, just a quick comment. There've been a lot of great, great communication and comments. Uh, Linda talked about the Impact Weekend. It's November 2nd and 3rd. The focus of the garden will be on the 3rd from 10 to 3:00. And you can sign up through the signup genius at the webs, the web address, So, uh, please go on there, sign up. And if you're feeling ambitious, you'd like to volunteer, there's no shortage of other wonderful nonprofits that can use your support on that Impact Weekend.
Thank you. Thank you. And if, if you can't remember that URL, like me, you can just Google, um, Impact Group, uh, November 2nd, 3rd, Clarkston, Michigan. And you'll, you'll see their webpage and you can find the signup genius. And you just scroll through the dates until you get to Sunday the 3rd. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Does anybody, did you, did you say?
Alan and Mike Campanioli, they ended up very back. Okay?
We'll start front to back.
Yes. Well, thank you, Linda. Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate that a lot.
You got Don, Monica.
Oh, yeah. Uh, Don. Yes, Don, please.
Don Tillman, 7755 Newport Drive. I gotta say that they did a great job on putting the garden together. Really, really put a lot of effort in behind it. Lisa, Joette, well, Heidi, Linda really worked hard on it. One of the things that kind of throws me off a little bit is during the winter, I think, I don't, first of all, I don't know how many of you've been out there to look at that, at the McCord property. If that's the same thing we want to keep the name as McCord or maybe want to change it. Uh, it could be something open too. But anyway, it's a beautiful piece of property. It's got a lot of rolling hills. And I got to thinking, and I've talked to the committee about it and I've talked to Larry and stuff like that. It could be beautiful for cross-country skiing because it got a lot of rolling hills and stuff that they could use for it. A lot of hills that kids could use for sleds, sliding, stuff like that. I think it could be beautiful for that. And during the summer, I mean, and Larry has mentioned something for bikes, kids on bikes, to use the trails to go around or walking their dogs or whatever like that. So I think that would be a beautiful piece of property if we could take that consideration for a winter thing too, which you could add to it. And I think for the kids itself, just for sleds on a Sunday or Saturday, they could get out there and sled. And the family could pull the kids around on their sleds. There's a lot, what is it? 34 acres or 36?
About 36.
36? 36? I couldn't remember. But anyway, it's a lot that they could have fun with. So it could be a big family thing too. Besides gardening, which I think gardening, especially children, I think there's a lot of kids that's never gardened before. They could really turn out nice for it. So just keep that in consideration. Maybe we could put a master plan on drawing that up and making it fun for the families and stuff like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else from the public?
Okay.
No, they have the next presentation, actually.
Super quick. Can I say something as a member of the public?
Okay.
I just wanted to share that, um, years ago, when I was a Girl Scout troop leader, I took my troop to the garden and it was just a wonderful experience. Um, and I, I just wanted to also just let Lisa know that I'm happy to help with this initiative in any way. Um, and I think it would be really beneficial to look at how we can partner with the schools as well, um, to bring fresh food into the schools. I think that would be a really great opportunity and it could also increase, uh, funding opportunities if you're partnering with the schools. So let me know if I can support in any way.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else in the public? Anyone's online, anyone online that would like to add a comment on the presentation? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you. Lisa. Okay. Now we have a presentation from our consultant from Lansing. And this is something that was asked for, Trustee Alamato. And happy that Adam and Mike are here. I don't know if you guys, members of the board met with Adam before. This is Adam Wright and Mike Campanioli. Actually, Mike, you live in Clarkston, right? You live in the Bendis Township, I think?
Springfield.
Springfield, right? Okay.
Clarkston, Maryland.
Clarkston, Maryland. Okay. You're close. You're close. Yes.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll jump in and start. I'm Mike Campanioni. I'm a lobbyist with Midwest Strategy Group. Uh, we're a multi-client firm in Lansing. We've been representing the township about eight or so months now. I wanted to give you folks a little bit of an update on some of the things we're working on on your behalf in Lansing and, and talk a little bit about, uh, how we interact with the township. Adam's going to jump in about halfway through the presentation here. Uh, I am, I am a local resident. Uh, I, I went to Clarkston Schools. I grew up in the area. I have family in the area. So I will tell you all, it's really great to be able to work on the policy issues that I love in Lansing while also kind of feeling like I'm helping out my hometown. It's kind of a cool thing to get to do. Uh, I'll touch a little bit on some legislation that we're tracking for the township and have engaged on in Lansing. Um, one thing I'll mention with the legislature is there always are going to be issues. The legislature introduces about 4,000 pieces of legislation every two-year legislative session. We're reaching the end of that two-year session. So the docket that we track of all the legislation for you guys is pretty lengthy, as you can imagine. A lot of bills in Lansing impact local government. If you're curious on any bill numbers on these or any more details on any of the bills we're mentioning, please don't hesitate to ask us. Um, we're happy to give you more info. But wanted to touch a little bit on one of the big ones, which is Revenue Sharing Trust Fund. That's a bill that would, uh, set of bills that would lock away a portion of the sales tax for revenue sharing. So you wouldn't have to fight, uh, with the legislature every year to make sure that local governments get their fair share of revenue sharing funds. That's a very important thing, uh, something that's very supported by all the local government-related associations like MML and MTA. And we're working in conjunction with them to try to pass those bills in the lame duck session, which will be coming up here post-election. Uh, we're also tracking the Public Safety and Violence Prevention Fund. It's a relatively similar, uh, concept where we're going to lock away a chunk of money. That money will then get, uh, spent directly on communities for grants related to public safety and is impacted by your crime rates and how much money you receive. I will mention one thing. Uh, in that legislation, they have capped communities at 25% of that total fund. So all of those dollars don't simply go to Detroit. Um, so that's kind of worth mentioning from a big picture perspective. Um, we're tracking some bills. Uh, sometimes we really want to support things like Revenue Sharing Trust Fund. Sometimes we want to oppose things and try to stop them. And that's a big part of what we do. Uh, I'll mention the franchise peg fee legislation. It would re-categorize what we call a streaming service. You guys are probably aware right now, uh, you guys are charging, basically get a chunk of the cable fees out there that goes towards running your local public access channel. Uh, in Lansing, there is a bill to redefine what a streaming service is. You're probably aware like the Netflix's and Hulu's of the world don't pay those fees. There are fears out there that cable companies will in turn say, everything's a streaming service, including what you pay for as cable. And that would effectively evaporate all of those dollars for you running your public access channel. That's something we are opposed to and something we're working on, uh, to try to engage with the legislature more on. Uh, we are supportive of ground emergency medical transport legislation. We actually talked to your fire chief about it earlier today. Uh, that legislation would effectively, um, allow you to get reimbursements for Medicaid ambulance runs from the federal government. It's a drawdown and something we should support. Other states around us are doing it. There are some startup costs in Lansing associated with that, with the State Department. And so we're kind of working through those issues. That's something we're hopeful we can get done in lame duck. Uh, public safety organizations are very supportive of it. Uh, the last thing I'll mention is something you may have seen in the news. Uh, the adopt and amend practice the legislature engaged in, in 2018 with the paid sick leave and minimum wage, uh, updates. That process has been deemed unconstitutional by the State Supreme Court. Uh, the fun part of that is, uh, we are now in 2024 and they only made that decision a few weeks ago, uh, a few months ago. And that is impactful to local governments. Uh, paid sick leave will need to be paid to part-time employees. Um, and minimum wage will also need to be as well as that increases. So that rolls back to the stuff the legislature adopted, not to what they amended. Uh, that was ruled unconstitutional, that process of doing that in the same session. So, uh, we're back to where we sort of were at with those proposals and those are impactful to, to local governments. Uh, I do want to give a little context for all of this, just where we're at from a timing perspective. I mentioned we're closing in on the end of a two-year legislative session. Um, I will tell you, the legislative calendar looks a lot like a school calendar. Uh, they have a spring break. They have a summer break. They have, uh, some time off around Thanksgiving. Um, that time off gets longer in election years. For some strange reason, no one likes voting on things while they're out knocking on doors, talking to voters. Um, so what ends up happening is right now, uh, the Senate is still doing some committee work, still doing session about one day a week. The House, uh, hasn't been in for the whole month of October. They will not be back until just after the election to select their leadership for the next legislative session. Uh, we're obviously coming into a pretty contentious election. Uh, Adam's going to talk a little bit about what the calendar looks like for November, December. But one thing I'll mention on all of these bills is that the shot clock is very short. Legislation dies at the end of every two-year session. We are approaching the end of that two-year session. Uh, Democrats currently hold a trifecta in Lansing. They hold the governorship, the Senate and the House majorities. Uh, the last time that happened was 1971. So understand, this is a generational opportunity for Democrats in Lansing to move legislation that they probably wouldn't have been able to in other circumstances over the last 40 years. So expect lame duck to potentially be, uh, very, very busy in that period between post-election and really post-Thanksgiving and Christmas. So Adam will talk a little bit more about that, um, and about the election and what we're expecting to see in Lansing.
Well, good evening. It's good to be here with you and to give you an update. Adam Wright with Midwest Strategy Group. Want to talk a little bit about the November election. First of all, we're all grateful that it's done in two weeks. Uh, I'm sure, uh, nobody more than Clerk Newbeck. But there are some implications of what happens on Election Day with the legislature. So, uh, there are about 11 highly competitive seats that we are looking at that will determine whether or not the Michigan House Representatives stays in Democratic hands or flips to Republican hands. So there are several seats the GOP is defending. Uh, seats in Oakland County, in Jackson County, Monroe and Wayne Counties. And there are also several Democratic seats that are in Macomb, Wayne, Calhoun, Northern Michigan. And there's one in West Michigan, I think, that's probably fallen off the list. But Democrats in the House of Representatives currently have a 56 to 54 seat majority. So you need 56 votes in order to pass a bill. So they need all of their members to show up to get a bill that they have as a priority passed. So Republicans would need to win two seats in order to flip the majority. So without having a prognostication from me, I can tell you, we've talked to Democratic leadership in the House and Republican leadership in the House. Republicans have been more energetic and have been more positive about their outlooks. Democrats have been a little more reserved about their, um, their, uh, prospects in two weeks. But it's all about turnout and it's all about parties getting their voters out to the polls to be able to, um, win the election. So why that's important is after the election, we'll have a lame duck session. And Mike talked a little bit about the political calendar for the House and the Senate. After the election, we probably only have, in regard to session days, 11 or 12 session days total that they are going to meet to be able to hold committee and consider legislation in both chambers. And if, um, Democrats hang on to the Michigan House and retain majority, it may not be as robust, right? Because they'll have another two years of their trifecta to be able to implement their priorities. If they lose the majority in the House of Representatives and Republicans would take over, I think you'll see, and you will see, a much more robust lame duck session where they will have 11 or 12 session days to enact as many of their priorities as they can before Republicans take over in January. Uh, some of the things that I think you'll see in lame duck that we have here for you is before they broke for, uh, summer break, the governor and legislative leaders wanted to try to get an economic development package passed having to do with strategic outreach and attraction reserve fund. Um, they, and it included some transit, some transit programs and whatnot, but it's $600 million of corporate income tax dollars that would be available. And they would take those dollars for 10 years and dedicate it to this economic development, um, program. So it was not able to get done before the legislative break. They couldn't get the votes to do it. So we expect that to happen and them to take a run at it in lame duck. A budget supplemental, if lame duck is tame, we expect them to do a budget supplemental to do end of year, close of books, uh, we could, we would in a typical year. If lame duck, uh, is more robust because Republicans will take over, you'll see a bigger budget supplemental. Uh, as we went through the budget process, Democrats left between 300 and 330 million dollars on the balance sheet. So there's still that amount of money to be spent in the current budget year. And so, uh, we would expect that if they lose control of the House of Representatives, that they will not leave that on the balance sheet for Republicans when they come and take over. We expect that they would utilize that and spend it, um, before the end of the year. Uh, Revenue Sharing Trust Fund is also something that is a priority for local governments. As Mike talked about, getting that over, uh, the line and making sure that. As Mike talked about, getting that over the line and making sure that every year that we go through the appropriations process, that local governments don't have to lobby their state legislators just to get the revenue-sharing dollars that are due to them. So we'll be working hard on your behalf for that, but also we're working with Michigan Townships Association, the Michigan Municipal League, and Michigan Association of Counties as a group to be able to get this done and over the line. And then to follow up on the paid sick leave and minimum wage situation that we have, we've heard from Republicans and Democrats that they would like to see something changed with it. But we're not certain what that change is. There are business groups that have put forward a proposal. Some of those things would be to include exemptions for organizations or businesses that have less than 50 employees. There's something now that's in the, in the current language of the law that would allow somebody to no-call, no-show their job for three days in a row without being penalized. That's obviously a real problem for local government. It's a real problem for any business. They'd like to see that changed. They'd like to be able to offer any hours that they have upfront, as opposed to having an employee accrue them throughout the year. And then they'd also like the ability to incorporate this with general paid time off. So as opposed to having a sick bank leave and a vacation time schedule, they'd like to incorporate that all into one bank for paid time off. So that's something that the business groups have been putting forward as their suggestions. I know several unions have asked that the legislature not do anything and leave the proposal as it is. So we will see what the governor and legislative leaders do in lame duck in regard to this proposal. And we'll keep you updated because we know it has significant impact on the township as you go into 2025. These provisions will take effect in February of next year. Now, one item that I wanted to talk about, that when we met with directors today that was brought up, was short-term rental legislation. It's an important thing for local government. There is legislation out there to create a Short-Term Rental Act, and that's very important. What it would do is, it would say, local governments can't outright ban them, but they will still be able to regulate them. And they'll also be able to have an excise tax that would be charged to a short-term rental that would return money to the local government to be able to do enforcement of short-term rentals. One of the things that we've heard throughout the state is, one of the biggest issues with short-term rentals is actually policing them and making sure they're following the rules and orders set by, set forth by the local government. And so we will be working and are working on that piece of legislation to hopefully get that over the line in lame duck as well. And then just want to talk generally about Midwest Strategy Group and our work with Independence Township. So like Mike said, we've been with you about eight months, and we are an extension of Independence Township, but in Lansing. And we're your voice there. So whether it's with your legislators or with the governor's office or the state departments, we're there as an extension of you. And we're happy to be your voice and proud to represent you there. We have, we try to develop a strategy with all of you and your department heads to see what your priorities are and then execute those strategies in Lansing. And so to do that, we've worked with the township administration, as well as department heads, to listen to what they're working on, take that to Lansing, and execute on that. Some of the things that we've done is, we've tried to forward as many grant opportunities as possible. We know in local government, funding is always a big issue. And so we've forwarded several grant opportunities over the last eight months, normally through our weekly communications that we send for various departments to review and to also potentially apply for. And communication is the last bullet point I want to talk about. We are, we're proud of, and our firm of communication, that's one of the things that we do and we think we do well. And so we have frequent communication with Independence Township through emails, phone calls, text messages, and in-person meetings with township officials. We provide weekly updates to the township through email that we send out that gives you an update of what's going on in Lansing, things that are particularly of interest to you. If there's something on your docket that you have, your legislative docket, which is new legislation or legislation that we've been monitoring for you that has moved, that information is included as well. And just kind of some general information, like what's the political landscape in Lansing right now, right? What is the, what is the election looking like over, throughout the state of Michigan and, and whatnot? We've given presentations to your department heads and directors. We did that today, had a good meeting with them. We've sent an opportunity, at least a couple of times, I think, for township officials to apply to state boards or commissions. There's a lot of times that you as officials or your staff have expertise in an area, and the state is looking for somebody to serve on various boards. And so we've sent those forward for you to be able to disseminate that information to your staff to be able to see if that's something that they would want to take advantage of. We were able to host some folks from Independence Township at our State of the State reception earlier in the year. That's important, and we would welcome you all to any reception that we have at the office for State of the State. You get to meet personally legislators and department directors who come in, and it gives you an opportunity to expand your knowledge of a lot of people that are in Lansing, that we work with on a daily basis. And we've worked with your state legislators to get support for federal funding opportunities, state funding opportunities. And we work with your state legislators to communicate what your priorities are and work on those priorities for you. So to finish, we are, again, grateful to be your representatives and proud to represent Independence Township in Lansing. And we're happy to be here tonight and open to any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Mike. And I would like to open that for any questions or comments from the board. Trustee Alamato.
Thanks for the presentation, but I think it was missing a key piece of what I was looking for when I asked for this to be presented. It's costing us quite a pretty penny every month, and I was looking for some numbers with the return on investment. Because I think, I, I'm going to be honest, I was against this. I'm not a fan of lobbyists, because in my mind, whether we hired you or not, you would be in Lansing doing what you're doing. And there are groups like MTA and things like that that I would think strengthen numbers. So us going to bat with a group like that, who's looking out with us, Lake Orion, and all these communities in Northern Oakland County around here, that we might have the same issues, that group is going to bat for us. So I'm looking for some more detail on the money that we're giving you, if that makes sense.
Sure. And this is what I'll say, is MTA is a spectacular organization, as is MML, as is Michigan Association of Counties. And they generally represent townships in Lansing, right? And so we work in partnership with them a lot on a lot of your priorities. But what they don't do is represent Independence Township to get any sort of grant money or get individual dollars in the budget that your legislators would do. So they don't do that. They don't do the individualized planning and strateg, oh, strategy, that, that you would do with us as your lobbyists. And so some of the things that we have done, as an example, the Video Services legislation that we're working on is something that would impact your budget by hundreds of thousands of dollars on an annual basis. And that's something that we've worked with the folks that were on your television to be able to make sure that we get your information and work as a group of stakeholders to fight that and to make sure it doesn't pass because that would have a negative impact. We've worked with the Michigan Department of Transportation and your staff on specific grants, and we're able to, just through meeting with them and having conversations, increase a grant that you had by, I think it was about a half a million dollars. But we can get that information for you as well. And so we've represented local governments for many years, and it's not always going to be every single year that we can come to you and say, we got you an appropriation in the budget this year. So we can do that with some, some local governments. But it's because we put in the time and effort and had a strategy and made a plan and worked the plan for several legislative terms. And we will continue to do that. And so one of the things that is a challenge is because your legislators in Lansing are Republican and they're in the minority, it is more difficult to get direct appropriations. But we can get information to you about how we can help you with grant dollars through the various programs, because that doesn't have anything to do with Republican-Democrat split. That's about how we can get you in front of the right people to talk about the grants that you need for your, for your township. One of the things we talked to the directors about today that I think is important with grants is that we have a full strategy that we try to employ with grants. So if, if they wanted to apply for a grant for the community garden, normally what we would do is, we would work with the Department of Natural Resources, have a pre-meeting with them, ask about the grant, what, what all the requirements are, and have them, the group, work with the department on their application. And if they're successful, that's wonderful. If for some reason they don't get that grant, you would do a post-meeting with them to be able to sit down and understand why they didn't get the grant and how they can improve it next time to be able to be more successful. And we've been able to employ that strategy with several communities. And while they might not get the grant dollars right away, down the road, they've been able to be successful to do that. And so I wish I could come here and tell you that we got you a specific grant in the budget this year when we worked with your legislators. We were not successful in that. But we have been successful, I think, in building the strategy and moving forward to set us up for success in the future.
And I'm happy to jump into and mention, just from a budget and timing cycle perspective, right about now in the year is when the state starts planning for their budget for the next fiscal year. So understand, the state budget starts, you know, September 30th, ends, starts October 1st. State departments, right about now, are thinking about what FY 25/6 looks like, so almost 10, 11 months from now. So understand that from a timing perspective, when we're brought on, you have to, you know, sort of align that timing a little bit too with what the state's cycle for spending those dollars are. Something I'll mention from a legislative perspective, if you do see the House potentially flip going into next year, there's probably more opportunity as your representative, Mike Harris, will be in the majority. We've met with Mike numerous times, worked with him closely on a lot of these asks. Just understand that that's a lot harder of an environment when you're in the minority, and so that may shift pretty dramatically going into next year.
Trustee Ritchie.
I guess to piggyback off what Terry was saying too, it's like, one of the things when we voted for to have the strategists and lobbyists in Lansing was that at some point in time throughout the year, not just once, but maybe hopefully multiple times, that there is like a scorecard, and it's, it's basically, there should be deliverables for, you know, money's going out. What are, what are we getting for that? There should be a deliverable. And, and in some of the detail in there, they, you know, there's still talk about different amounts of money that you guys have looked at, but there's still nothing like, we applied for 10 grants, got zero, or one, or whatever it might be. And to me, there needs to be a report card of, of what was, what actions were taken and what, what the results of those actions were. And that's, that's what we need to see in the presentation.
Anyone else? Jim, do you want to, you, you want to add something?
I'm good.
You're good? Sam?
No, I met with the guys today on behalf of the zoning board, or the DDA and Residential Open Space Advisory Committee and explained to them what some of our needs and things that we were looking for. So this has been my first contact with them. I haven't had a chance until today. Some of the members of ROAC and the DDA were also present at the meeting. So we've got some appointments set up with some other, with some other groups in the, in the state that they're going to set us up with. So I, one of the reasons I contacted Adam and stuff was the same thing, is that I'd like to know what, you know, tell me how this works, because I haven't been being brought up to speed monthly or, I hadn't heard anything myself. So I was like, you know, where are we at with this? I'm willing to give them an opportunity to perform, and I'm going to, I'm going to start working a little more closer with them to see how that, you know, how that interaction works, because I haven't before. So I'm not going to, not going to go, I'm not going to cast any judgment at this time, because I'm just getting started to see, you know, what the benefits could be from working with them. So unfortunately, I'm just getting involved.
Sure. And then good comments. I, you know, excuse me for so.
Sure. No, that's, you talk more than once.
Yeah. So, and good comments by fellow trustees here. When I, what?
No, go ahead.
So when I was in one of the meetings of cast, which is the supervisor meetings in Oakland County, it was brought my attention about some of the services and some of these groups they do, they done for many other communities. I hear like Orion got several substantial amount of several, like $10 million or Rochester got some from appropriations, like 50 or more. I don't remember the numbers, some amount like that. And on the presentation I attend, I was told that, you know, those services can help you. If, you know, you have the right setup, what is the right setup? Have a meeting with our directors, follow our needs, identify what are our needs, and ask for the right amount of money that maybe can help us. Since they are a group, they always establish a state in Lansing that will be able to help us to get something. That was my idea when I brought it to us, because I saw for other communities has been work. But also didn't work like, hey, three months later, six months later, hey, we got this. Now, it took a little bit of time, but after the relationship established, identified the needs, they got some money there. And I, I, that's why I saw this as a good recommendation to the board, and I saw that it may work. That's why I think that sometimes it takes some time, you know, to get that. And I still think that will be good to give us more, even more time. Today, we met again with our directors, our fire chief, and it's all needs in our community that we need more funding. And I see this, that worked for Orion and worked for Rochester. And correct me if I'm wrong, that's a community that you guys represent, right?
That's correct.
So I think that, you know, let's give it a little time and see what happens. But now, they, today, they met with our directors again, they, they, they changed more, their business card, all that. There was some, some other needs that just happened, and I, I think, like I agree with Trustee Morocco, we should give just more time and see some results. Jim?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Aliaga. Yeah, I, I will say, I obviously know Supervisor Barnett and Mayor Barnett, Rochester Hills, Orion Township, and they have had great success. Midwest Strategy Group is a very, as far as retaining a lobbying firm, they're certainly very reputable, have a, you know, a very respected reputation in Lansing throughout the state. So that, want to establish that. We have a, we have a professional team working for us. I also understand and, and agree with Trustee Nalamothu, Trustee Ritchie. You know, they're de facto employees or adjuncts to our team here in the Township Hall. Now, I'll also add that when you hire an employee, they're only as, as effective as the inputs or the directives that they receive. So the one thing I'm struggling with too is, I don't know how much we've really leveraged other, other than they're doing what they know and providing us general information that will be beneficial to the township. But what have we done as a, as a township? And I, maybe it's really more a question for our full-time, you know, elected Supervisor Aliaga and company. What have we done to specifically leverage, leverage them as a team? Because without inputs, they're generally kind of doing what they think we want to know about. But I know Supervisor Barnett, Mayor Barnett is just, again, two examples, because they're clients of Midwest Strategy Group. They're very specific in what they, they want as an outcome. So have we been feeding them the, the proper inputs so that they can derive those outcomes that we were seeking? So that's, that's a question, because I don't disagree that, you know, eight months is not enough time to really determine that this has been successful or, or not. But at the same time, I want to make sure that we, as a township, you know, and I'm speaking to this entire board, are doing what we can to provide them appropriate inputs that were clear in our expectations as well.
Sure. Very good question. Actually, they did. They did approach, and we did approach. So we have, I, I can go into some things. They, we have identified some project for DPW, but there was some internal things that they couldn't communicate with the director at the time. It was several months ago, three or four months ago. And that's why we couldn't identify exactly the project. So one is DPW, you already started contact with, you, no, before you. the issues is again, like I said, we are a Republican town, we don't have that majority in the House, like he stated, and we are waiting to see this outcome election, to see what's going on. But they know what their needs are. They already know what their needs are.
Anyone else? Yes.
I know you met earlier in the year with the department heads. I don't know if you were able to meet with all of them. So you got a feel of what I would hope, what their needs were, have, after meeting with them, did you provide them with grants, and were you able to apply for some? I mean, that would kind of give us that report card that Trustee Ritchie is speaking of is...
Sure. So first of all, I want to make sure that it's clear. We don't actually apply for the grants on the township's behalf. So we identify grants, and we identify what the, what the needs are, and then try to match those with what is available. And so specifically with the Fire Chief, there were some specific needs around equipment and in regard to like fire trucks and whatnot, that there isn't necessarily a huge grant program that's available. And so one of the things that we looked at is trying to work with legislators to get a direct appropriation to do that. And so because they're not in the majority, that wasn't able to happen. But it's something that we continue to talk to Representative Harris about. The other issue are safe pathways, that is a big issue that I've heard from so many of the directors and the members on the board, and that's something that we continue to work as, and have that as a top priority for, for the township and working with legislators to do that. And that's something else that we'll work with MDOT and their legislators to see if we can get something. So that's something that not only can we can work with state legislators, we can also work with Congresswoman McLean's office to identify that as a need and an infrastructure improvement that we can work to see if we can also get federal funds that can help take care of some of those needs. And for Trustee Ritchie, we are happy to, we're happy to come here quarterly, we're happy to come here bimonthly, whatever it is that you would like to see us and the communication that you would like to have from us, we would be more than happy to do what works best for the township. We, I just worked with Orion Township to set up their, their meeting schedule. We planned out for an entire year what we're going to sit down, and when we're going to sit down with their department heads, when we're going to sit down and do board presentations. We would love to do the same thing here and have that entire year planned out. And we would love to have a scorecard. We'd love to sit down with you and have that conversation about what that looks like and what the priorities are of everybody on the board, and what all the department heads need, and have that, and have those priorities come to us, and then so we know exactly what those, what the rank of those priorities are, and what we can, what we realistically think we can accomplish in a two-year legislative session.
And I do want to jump in and say, I appreciated the outreach, just the direct in saying, hey, we want to, we want to talk to you, we want to talk about open space and what we're doing here in green space. We love that, that's what, that's what we're here for. So if you guys are sitting on individual committees, advisory committees, you're working on individual policy issues as board members, please let us know. We'll come sit in on one of the meetings, we'll give you a few names, you know, we'll set meetings up, we'll help kind of push your agenda. We're happy to do this, this is what we do.
Thank you. Since we touch about grants, and I just found out from Dave McKee early, that in the website of just Representative Lisa McLean showed that we're getting 3.5 million dollars grant money to help the south of the township or help cut water, which is very good, it's, you know, coming from the federal government, so we're getting some grants, 3.5 million dollars.
Is that through Midwest Strategy though?
No. And since, I said, since we're talking about...
The topic is about Midwest Strategies, so that's why I'm saying, I'm not saying we don't get grant money.
No.
I guess the whole thing is, we're paying the money every month to this organization, and there should be a list of items that they're trying to achieve, and we should have a scorecard that says, hey, we made progress on these fronts.
If you recall, Trustee Ritchie, what it says is, since we're talking about grants, and it says we're talking about, since we're touching about grants, I want to let you know that we're getting 3.5 million, and no, because the strategy is because of me, because I went to DC, I follow up that, I pushed for the application, it was all I was doing with my office, working very hard with Lisa McLean's office.
Maybe I'm a little punchy from watching debates, that when we're talking about a subject, we all of a sudden we go to a different topic.
I know, open for debate. I, you asked me a question, I replied that, you want to know who...
Can I make your comment, please?
Yeah, I just want to finish. No, no, just keep it a debate, and I'll try to fight. I, it never says it comes from Midwest Strategy, that's all I want to clarify. Okay, Trustee Morocco.
From all this dialogue, and we got a long meeting, it's going to be tonight, the, what I think, what I just got out of this, what would be helpful from a board perspective and also is, could you compile a list of goals of the departments that we could have so we know what to fight, you know? It seems kind of, it seemed like it would be beneficial if you knew like what, if everyone, the parks knew what residential open space was trying to do, and if, you know, if we knew what, you know, the parks was doing, and what Safety Path was doing, and what these other directors were doing, so kind of whether it's a win or lose checklist, but it would tell the board here also, it would let us know what you're coming up with at these meetings as the needs of the township. We're not pervy to those conversations, so I don't know what every director is asking for. So that's different than, you know, did we get money or didn't get money, just since you're gathering the data, if you could do a, if you could do a summary of what are all, what are all the township directors and board members asking you, or, you know, conveying to you that our needs are, so have you put that together for us as part of your service, you know? I think would be helpful.
Trustee Morocco, I'm happy to report that we have that, and we have sent it to the supervisor for dissemination to board members. And as part of that section is meeting with township officials to determine priorities, and it has a number of bullet points on there that list the things that we've been working on with, with the directors.
Yes, Clark Newick?
I don't see that as a board member, so I would suggest if I can be copied on that email, what I can do is we can add that to the agenda maybe once a month, if you give it, I don't know how often, under our communications and reports, I'd be happy, and then the board and the public can see it that way.
Sure, yeah, we, Trustee Ritchie, we send out weekly reports every Friday, sometimes Saturday if my Friday is busy. We send it out so to give you an update on what's going on in Lansing and specific things that we may be working on for you.
I think maybe not so much for the public, what's going on in Lansing, but if you can give us maybe, each of our, several of the departments on each do give monthly updates, and then we do, so maybe if you could just try to streamline it to be more of a monthly, targeted more to the township, and then we can add it, and then if the supervisor at some point wants to schedule you, you know, quarterly or whatever to come speak, that at least it's always something that we can read to get an idea, and a pulse of what you're doing.
Well, one thing I'll comment on is we defer to you folks and how you want the communication. We're probably over communicators at some level, so please, please let us know how you want to hear from us. That's super.
You know, what I think is going to be a good idea is, maybe if you can send updates to all the board members, that everybody's emails and the website, it's easy to find, and if you can see all of them would be good. So everybody can be updated about what's going on. And then, that was a good idea.
Yeah, no, I like that, I think everyone's on the same page, the communication, establishing clear directives, so there is a tangible, tangible goals to measure by the end of, end of a year or end of a given term. Because I, and I don't, I'm not placing blame on Midwest Strategy Group, but I think somewhere down the line, at least us part-time trustees don't receive those updates, and it would be certainly a big interest to me to, to receive regular communication, whatever it is. Because as one of seven people on the board and a fiduciary to the township residents, I want to know that we are spending our money appropriately, and again, I don't know where the chain broke, but we haven't received any communications in a very long time from, you know, so that's all.
Well, that's why they are here and see, you know, what we can do to improve. Like I said, they have a meeting many times already with director, we identify your needs, and it kind of worked, and we are waiting for good results. But thank you, Jim, I was waiting for your input anyways, because, you know, you're a former state representative, and I know you're very familiar with, with the groups and many others, so I want to, that's why I want to hit, why I ask you first, because you know, you're a former state rep, and you know how that play out. So, all right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Concerned agenda, request to approve the Board of Trustees' special meeting minutes of October 3, 2024, and the regular closed session of meetings, meetings of October 8, 2024. Then we have request to approve the October 14, 2024 check run, including ACH, 1 million 918,000 dollars and 674 dollars and 98 cents, and ratified the October 11, 2024 payroll of 373,648 dollars and 12 cents. And the July and August 2024 EFT, ACH, wire activity of 949,080 dollars and 26 cents, and a 671,758,180 cents. Three, request to approve the Neighborhood Road Improvement Project, Neighborhood Road Improvement Program, NRIP, from Spring Lake North. And I remember this actually, it was, we increased the contributions for that, let's see here. I remember the Township Board approved the Neighborhood Road Improvement Program, offering to contribute to the public road repairs. I remember that was with former Supervisor Jerry Fisher, Jerry's here, nice to see you, Jerry.
Thank you.
And the Township offers a contribution of 25%, that was raised, I think, was 5 to 25 at that time, of the cost up to 50,000 from the Board of, the Board of Trustees, and has the ability to go as high as 100,000 at the discretion of the Board. Two subdivisions have applied, the budget has been reviewed, and the funds are available. The developments have one year to complete, the developments have one year to complete the improvements in order to receive funds from the NRIP program. If the improvements are no made, there is no, will be a contribution for the NRIP, and the Neighborhood Road Improvement Program is separate from the SAD funds and procedures. So it's no, I mean, it's separate from the SADS, even though these two groups are the ones that apply, you know, for SADS. Okay.
Ron? Discussion, I guess, I'd just like to, in the MAF, there's no discussion or there's no documentation on what the total Neighborhood Road Improvement Program fund is. So if we're going to approve this amount, how do we know how much of the total fund is being allocated to that?
I think we, far as I remember, we allocate up to 200,000 per year, that's why we allocate every year, first come, first served, far as I remember, but Kim, would you like to break? I think we, can you come to the podium, I just want to, I'm pretty sure it's 200,000 every year, is why we allocate for this.
Well, just to me, as part of the MAF, it should, it should be what the fund balance is and everything, so we know what we're doing.
Sure. Rick, for the, Trustee Ritchie have a question, how much money we have for the...
I guess, in the MAF, it doesn't say how much money is in the Road Improvement Fund, and then how much, if we allocate what's listed in the MAFs tonight, like, how much is, you know, are we using all of it, is a tenth of it, or?
Well, I know we've been putting about 200,000 dollars in budget every year. 50,000 comes from the police fund, the other 150 comes from the general fund, and we've hardly used any of it.
I know that.
Now, and it's, it doesn't accumulate, even though I think there are some rules out there that say it could and should, but we never have, because we've never had any real interest in it. So if that is something that we want to change going forward, we can do that, that's easy enough.
Did we, did we fund Wingate, or I think maybe we cut that check this year, but it was 2023 funds?
I saw 6,200 bucks, I was looking at it earlier today, and I think it got paid like in December, I'm not sure exactly what day, but that was one of...
So not be this, this year's money?
No, it was last year's money.
Okay.
Yeah, it was definitely last year's money.
That was for Julie Tully, right?
Wingate.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
So, so this is really, there's some new things going on where we're doing some changes to how we're doing SADS. In the past, when subdivision came in to request this funding, it was approved by the board after it had gone through the public hearings, and then the county commission had approved it. That was the trigger that said, that's good to be funded. And so it won't go to the county now to get that approval, so the question's going to be, and we do know, we spent quite a bit of time reading our, our policies related to this in the handbook, we know there's a lot of updates that need to happen, because we're doing something we haven't done in the past, which is handling SADS on public streets at the township level. We think it's a great opportunity, and so if we approve this now, and we haven't gone through the public hearings yet, then we're approving money for something that's not gotten to the end yet to say it's ready to go. Now, I know the public hearings are going to come up pretty quickly, and we'll be doing them, but, but there's part of me that thinks we need to, we need to not necessarily take this action yet until we do a better job of setting up our policy related to this and make changes to the end program. I know the assessor's been working hard, speaking with our attorney related to this, and to make some updates to that so that it fits, and there's, certainly there's more we need to talk about as a board on how we move forward, because there's a lot of interest in this, there's a lot of public interest in it beyond the ones that have already come forward. I think it would be easy to just approve these and say, yeah, let's, let's keep going, but we want to make sure we did do this stuff correctly. The only piece of this that I'm, that I kind of don't like is that one of the HOAs was already prepared to come forward for repair work they had done this year, similar to what Wingate did, and we had them combine it into, into this request all at once, which means if we stop now and don't approve this, then we're not giving them, you know, what they could have asked for in their first, so I'm not exactly sure how to handle that, and now we're going to get some help here. But again, it's a new process for the township, it's important we make sure if we don't have things the way we want them to be, that we get them right in the way we do this.
Sure, no, oh, good, good point. And I think it's our attorney, Stephanie Morita, would like to speak, so.
Good evening. I wasn't planning on speaking to the board on this issue, but I did have the, the pleasure of reviewing that policy earlier today, and I think the way that it's written, that if you wanted to approve the allocations out of this year's budget, which is what you would be doing, you, it would be fine, because the construction's not going to happen until next year. They have a year to complete the construction, and then another six months with permission under the policy. So I think, I think you're okay moving forward, and then at least getting those line items in under this year's budget, and just putting, and then, and then, you know, then taking a look at the policy and making sure you have everything in the order you want, you want it, but for purposes of tonight, I think you can move forward. I think you'd be all right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Morocco.
I'm all in favor of this and have been from the beginning. My concern is that it's going fast, and this document has some stipulations in it about what the process is, and I don't believe that we're right on the money on the process on some of it yet. That, I'm not, I don't know that the Special Assessment District, you know, and everything's got final approval, because I'm not, I've never done one of these before, but I'm in favor of allocating the money to the, to, you know, to, to the Spring Lake subdivision, contingent on them actually getting the SAD finalized, because I don't feel comfortable giving them it without the SAD being 100% finished. on some of it yet. That, I'm not, I don't know that the, um, Special Assessment District, you know, and everything's got final approval, um, because I'm not, I've never done one of these before. But I'm in favor of allocating the money to the, to, you know, to, to the Spring Lake subdivision, contingent on them actually getting the SAD finalized, because I don't feel comfortable giving them it without the SAD being 100% finished, um, and approved by, by, uh, by the county or by us. It, it kinda ties into the other part of the SAD thing, where there's a lot of cleanup to do with how much are we gonna give? How much are we going to give? I'm fine with using this year's allocation to the two that did all the work in 2024, came to us and asked for their projects to be done, Spring Lake and Sheringham, and us saying the 2024 allocation of this maximum fund will go to them, if that's what they're asking for, if everything else pans out.
And I think that would be a great motion to make, just like that.
But I think that we need to take a pause on, uh, we need to get our ducks in a row, because we've got now, I think, according to Kim, six subdivisions that have already applied, one that's in the process of maybe applying, or it's five or six. We don't have caps on what we're doing. We dangled the carrot. We're all anxious to contribute, but I think there's a lot, I think there's some work to do for the rest of this year, and our goal should be that by January 1st, our, um, Neighborhood Road Improvement Program is, is done. And then I think that we, and at the same time, on a different note, is that our Special Assessment Guide, which is not policy, needs to become some sort of policy with some guidelines, um, to take it to the next level of, uh, and some of that Paul's gotta talk to, because how much can contributions can be? How long is the payout? Are we limiting ourselves on future bonding opportunities for catastrophic failures in the fu, you know, all the things that I'm not clear on yet.
And Trustee Morocco, I can tell you that we have been thinking very similarly over the last week. Um, so, um, you know, there's a matter that's gonna be coming up later this evening, that we'll be discussing these issues in more detail, and I'd be happy to go into those particular issues at that time. Um, but in terms of, for purposes of these two matters that are here before you on, on your agenda, uh, where you have to make a decision tonight, I, it's, it's my opinion that you would be okay making that motion to, to move forward, contingent, of course, on them finalizing the SAD.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
I guess, uh, to go along with what Sam said, I'm in favor of this. I'm, you know, we've been working on this for many years, and trying to get this to move, and starting to move now, which is great. I guess, every time, I've been on this board for quite a while, and every time we move forward on something that's not tied up, it ends up biting us.
Some problems.
And, and I guess what I'm getting at, we, we wouldn't approve anything else without a budget, uh, knowing where our budget is and how much we're taking of that, and, uh, what it's gonna be. So to me, part of the, the whole program needs to have the financial part. When the MAF comes through, the, those financials are listed there as well, so we know if it's a, you know, you know, it's coming out of the budget, or, uh, you know, what's allocated, you know, what's left in the budget and everything else, so.
We oughta agree, we wanna help our neighbors and our community. I, I agree with that. I know the, the issue, and Corf, or whatever, Sam, what, I mean, if you wanna make a motion?
I do.
Yeah, just make a motion in the way that Stephanie, okay?
I just wanna make, I'm gonna make a motion with the commit, with the full commitment on my behalf, that we're, uh, supporting this proposal, but that there's some cleanup work to do and some, uh, Ts to cross and not to dice by the actual people getting the SAD, um, before it can be dispersed. So I would, I would move to approve a one-time contribution of $100,000 of Spring Lake North Homeowners Association for a road improvement project, subject to the terms and conditions of the Township's Neighborhood Road Improvement Program, with payments being made upon project completion in 2025, contingent on, um, the SAD, uh, being approved by the township, um, the cost being established, um, the engineering being established, and meeting all the guidelines and intent of the Neighborhood Road Improvement Program.
I need a second of motions.
I'll second you.
Okay. Motion, I mean, Trustee Morocco.
I'd like to-
Trustee Richie?
I've got a question.
Okay, sure.
We've added more in here. You know, we're talking about engineering, we're not involved in the engineering. And I'm trying to understand if we just put something in there that-
It's, it's my understanding, and the, and the way your policy is written right now, it deals primarily with road improvements on private roads, and it has a policy that requires, um, especially if you're doing a public road, that if you wanna go through the SAD process with the Road Commission, that the engineering has to get approved by the Road Commission itself. It's my understanding from staff that Road Commission has looked at the plans and has looked at the engineering bids and estimates, and has given approval of them. So I think it's just a matter of tying everything up with the Road Commission and making sure every I is dotted and T is crossed from their perspective, because in the end, they're responsible for the engineering on the, on public roads, not the township.
Yeah, well, I understand that. I just, I'm just questioning, we've added in more to this motion than I thought, which was just that we're awarding this based on it being, having a final approval. And, and, and we're not, we don't wanna be involved in the engineering, but they've certainly presented significant information to us about that, and there's also a permit that's been issued by the Road Commission for it. So I just, I don't wanna put something in here that causes a problem later. If you don't think it causes a problem, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I think the way I understand the situation is that the engineering has been approved by the Road Commission, so I didn't see an issue with that. If you wanted to maybe amend the motion to take out that provision, I, either way, I think it's, it'll work.
All right. I'm fine with the way that is, if you, if you think it's, it's okay.
Uh, Trustee Richie?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I'd like to amend on the, uh, on Sam's, uh, motion is that, uh, no money is paid out until, uh, all those caveats are met, those approvals have been obtained, so.
I think that was the intent of my motion. It was contingent on everything being approved by us, you know?
Okay. Are we open to the public? I know somebody would like to speak, so.
David Hayward, 6764 Berwick Drive. I just basically had a question regarding the funds. Um, this is one, this is, happens to be my neighborhood. So the question is, are the funds tied to the, the, the program, the SAD? So, say it doesn't go through, and it doesn't get approved for whatever reason, so we decide that, as a subdivision, we decide that we're going to do an assessment on the residents regardless, and not use the township. So is that money contingent on the SAD?
No, NRIP is separate from the SAD process.
So then I guess my question is, what difference does it make then at that point, regardless of the SAD, why you're trying to tie it to the SAD? If we don't get the project done, we don't get the money correct.
Correct, unless you fund it yourself. You can still apply for the NRIP program and get a contribution.
Okay.
That's my understanding of the program.
Okay.
Okay. Claire Newick?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Just to Mr. Hayward's question, though, the program overview says, uh, "The goal of the NRIP is to encourage neighborhoods to pursue, quote, 'special assessment financing' to improve public safety and revitalize the appearance and character of their neighborhoods. It is expected that funded road improvements will enhance marketability and so on." So it speaks right here, under the program overview, that the whole idea of this is special assessments.
You have to keep in mind that this was written with, um, RCOC projects in mind?
Correct.
And not our public road-
Correct.
-being the bank-only model?
Right, so, just kind of a follow-up to that, I have concerns just with the motion saying, "Subject to the terms and conditions of the NRIP program," where it doesn't really follow currently the NRIP program, because that was designed for the RCOC product, you know?
My concern is, to be fair to the two associations, they've been told that we would do this.
Agreed.
We're just trying to get the money allocated out of the 24 budget. However, the motion needs to be designed.
Maybe, I mean, just the word, the terms and conditions, it doesn't necessarily follow the terms and conditions.
Oh, man, my motion.
It just has to be, the project has to be completed.
The terms and conditions as set by the board. Amendment to terms and conditions as set by the board.
Okay.
Which we just did.
Which, right, you outlined ours, okay.
I agree with you. If this document's gonna get altered for us to clean it up, I don't wanna refer to-
Are you going to restate the motion then, since we have a motion on the floor with these changes then?
The only change we have is that I'm going to amend it, um, to not refer to the NRIP, but to refer to the approval of the Township Board. Is that?
I, I think that's great, because you're just, all you're doing, if you're clearing your motion, that the motion is just an allocation of these funds pending final approval by the Township Board of, of the project at a later date, I, I think you're gonna be okay. And, and, you know, if, you don't even have to be so specific with it, because no matter what happens, you're still gonna have to approve every single widget that's a part of this program.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that the money's, we're, we're, we're locking it in. If they come through with how everything works out for those two subdivisions, we're, we're committing that we're going to help them.
Right, and that's, and that's what I think that motion will do.
Okay.
Okay, so we're okay. So the motion is made, it's seconded by Ron.
We're allocating money, not paying money out.
Yes.
The total approval.
All right. Ron supported it?
Ron supported it, so we are okay, right?
Right, so the mo, so the motion is just to restate it for the record, just to make sure we're clear, that the motion is to allocate the money out of this year's budget, um, with the understanding that the actual payment of the monies will be contingent upon the SADs eventually being approved by the Township Board.
Yes. Okay. All right.
I'll try to make your next motion better.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion, uh, okay. May of two, is, is it the same thing, but this is a request to approve the contribution for public and road improvement project, the Neighborhood Road Improvement Program for Sheringham Woods.
This one's a little more complicated.
Mm-hmm. This one's a little more complicated, because they've, they've already done some work, and they were actually gonna come forward and request funds for the 20-some thousand dollars that they had spent repairing curb work, in, in, first because it had to be done, and very similar to what, uh, Wingate has done multiple years. But, and that's in, that's in plans of actually redoing the big project next year. We suggested, I believe, that they just put them together for this, this, but they actually wanna get paid 25% of the 20-some thousand dollars they've already spent to do the curbs this year, and I believe they've got invoices to, uh, that they've submitted those, to show that they've done it. So they're asking for $50,000 with $5,250 to actually be distributed to them, because they already spent the money on that part of that job. It's a little, it's a little different than what we've normally done, because we've got two things happening at once. I don't have a problem with it, because the intent is, they did that work, they spent 20-some thousand out of their HOA funds, they're entitled to 25%, and had they just done that on its own, we'd be approving it without issue. So I'll, that's my piece.
I have a question.
You have a question, Sam?
In the program guidelines, it says that, um, um, and I could be, you know, you, you just, you explain what I'm reading. Funding is awarded, um, on a first come, first served basis, based on application of Special Assessment District, and assessment role having been fully and legally approved and confirmed, and also that, um, it has to happen prior to any work starting. So does that, this is not supposed to be a reimbursement program, and I don't have a problem being a reimbursement program if that's the case, but again, if that is the case, then the documents need to give us the flexibility on timing for funding, you know?
You have to keep in mind that this citizens guide was drafted for private road SADs mostly, and we're, we're offering a new pilot program, so to speak. We just have to slow down the, the ship a little bit and amend the guide, and the township adopt a policy for working on public roads.
So, oh, so, yeah, so he's referring to the NRIP program, and I think the way he's reading that probably is accurate, because several of us have looked at that and said, that kinda does say that. Our practice has not been that. Our practice has been, and Wingate's done it seven, eight times, they bring in the application with the invoices from the money they spent, and we gave, and then we funded them the money. Were we doing it incorrectly based on our policy? Probably. And would that, would be doing it not following the current policy, probably, but I think, in fairness, that's how we've been doing it. We need to update the guide, just like we've been talking about.
They were quoted on historical practice.
Yeah, on historical practices, is this exactly how we've done it? You're right, you are right about that.
I read the wrong line. What I meant to read, if you'll let me.
Yep.
"All applications for NRIP allocation must be received, reviewed, and conceptually approved before any roadwork is initiated in order to be eligible."
That's not happened here.
I know that that's not how, I'm just, again, just stating that there's some conflicting things.
That's why we have a closed session later.
That's why we're gonna do all that.
So, um, I don't know how to make this motion, because it's piecemealed into reimbursement and future SAD payment, so I wouldn't, I don't know how to work that one.
I'll, I'll make a motion unless someone else still would like to.
Go for it.
Move to approve a one-time contribution of $50,000 to Sheringham Woods Homeowners Association for Road Improvement Program, with $5,250 to be paid in 2024 for improvements already made, and the balance to be paid in 2025 upon final approval of the SAD project being approved by the board, and, and completion of the paving project, subject to the terms as set by the board.
That's for the second half of the payment?
Yeah. Well, yes.
Okay.
Well, that doesn't get paid until the job's done anyway, so I don't need, because that will happen after it's completed, by default.
Okay. Stephanie, you want to add anything?
Should I put some more in there?
Um, I just wanna make sure that the motion is clear, that the remainder of the $50,000 that gets paid is contingent upon the successful completion of the SAD process and the adoption of the SAD role by, by the Township Board, that that was the intent behind the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and completion of the paving project.
Yes, of course.
Yep.
Of course.
Okay, I'll support.
Okay. All right, supported by Trustee Ron Ritchie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have our building director official, David Moran. Good evening, David.
Good evening, everybody. I'm David Moran, Independence Township Building Official and Building Director. I'm here this evening to request an approval for some changes and increases to the Building Department fee schedule. There are a couple of reasons why this is necessary. First of all, based on the requirements of Public Act 230, which is the Single State Construction Code, Act of 1972, it's the obligation of the Building Department and the Building Official to provide a variety of services for compliance and safety for building and construction activities within the township. In order to provide these services, I must have a properly-staffed office who can meet the needs of our customers, who come to our office, the counter, perform plan reviews, issue all types of permits that we offer, answer phones, and schedule inspections through our BSNA scheduling software. I also need state-licensed inspectors for all various trades, including building, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and those licensed inspectors who can execute all those required inspections. In 2021, the Building Department oversaw the issuance of an inspection process of 491 building permits, 1,517 trade permits, and a total of 3745 total inspections. This year, we will surpass over 1,100 building permits, 2,020 trade permits, and over 8,100 total, uh, inspections under those permits. This is a dramatic increase of over 100% plus, uh, in the last three years, and has been absorbed by my department. This is due to the fact that we have three very active projects, single-family, multifamily, and apartment projects, as well as a vast number of homeowners who are staying put in their existing homes and investing in these homes with improvements, adding accessory structures, additions, and remodeling projects. Another startling fact is that my department has consistently been managing over 1,000 active permits, and currently, as of this morning, that number is 1,350 active permits. Obviously, with this increase in permits and inspections, my department is critically understaffed and in need of additional support. I'm very blessed with the outstanding professionals and the staff who works efficiently every day to provide courteous and attentive customer service that I believe is one of the top building departments in this state. I'm very proud of the work that we put out there each and every day, and I could not do it with, without each and every one of those on my staff. I also have a goal to upgrade the efficiency of, of the department. I also have a goal to upgrade the efficiency of the, of the department. This will include providing additional service such as electronic plan reviews, uh, and those services would, would require improvements with, um, electronic plan review tables and the like. That way, we could issue those building permits online similarly to the way we do the trade permits as well. So electrical permits, plumbing permits, mechanical permits, contractors and homeowners alike can pull those permits online. It's a more efficient way of doing it. There's still things that my staff has to do to initiate and issue those permits, but we can't do that from a building standpoint, because we can't accept electronic submittals of those plans. There are other initiatives that I believe that are important, and that will have to come to, into play a little bit further down the road, for now, because I can't even consider taking on that additional work until we are properly staffed in the department. That being stated, and to compound my problem with the current fee schedule, is that there have, has not been enough incremental increases through the years to keep up with the fees, not only with surrounding communities, let alone keeping up with inflation. You can see the dates on the bottom of the, the current fee schedule as to where those have been, uh, approved increases. As with the last fee schedule updates, there were approved increases to the square footage fees for new construction additions, accessory structures, and decks only. This amounted to two cent increases in 2021, 22, and 23. Not a lot of revenue in a two cents increase on square footage. This increase did not amount to much revenue, and didn't make a dent in my department ability to upgrade services. The previous fee, fee schedule adjustment from that timeframe was made in 2015. Again, not a sweeping increase of fees, as should have been pursued years ago. Many of these fees have not been addressed, even as far back as when we first started using the BSNA module system of scheduling and reporting, uh, back in 2008. Application, for example, application fees for a new single-family home, uh, back in 2008 was a hundred dollars. Where in 2024, right now, it's still a hundred dollars. There's many other examples as to what, on the current fee schedule have not been increased in over sixteen years. That being stated, Public Act 230 also requires the building department to be fiscally responsible with the fees that are charged to the residents and contractors alike. This department has been historically low in their fee schedules compared with, with surrounding communities, and for that reason, I'm providing you with a fee study that I summoned with the help of an independent company, Carlisle Wortman Associates, and specifically Mr. Mike Radzick, who will present the results of this report in just a moment. There are a few other elements of change to the fee schedule that bears discussion, and that is mainly the market valuation of miscellaneous work in the community that is not even listed on our fee schedule. I'm proposing some of these fee changes to be based solely on market value. This market valuation is based on a percentage of one percent fee basis. Some examples of this will need to be discussed in just a moment. But for now, I'd like to introduce Mr. Mike Radzick with Carlisle Wortman, and present a comparable fee study, uh, to you, and then I will come back and, uh, present some further information and answer questions that you might have.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for having me here. Appreciate that. I'm with Carlisle Wortman Associates. My name is Michael Radzick. Just quickly for background, I've been with the firm for three years. Prior to that, I spent nineteen years as Community Development Director for the Charter Township of Ypsilanti in Washtenaw County, and before that, twenty-two years in police work, retired as a lieutenant from that career. So I've been with the firm now. I'm the operations manager for the company, was brought on board to help manage the growth of our Construction Code Consultation Division, which is a separate division from our planning and zoning, um, principal business. Mr. Moran asked us to do a fee study, and just to give you a quick tutorial on how we like to do these, um, it's good to first understand a little bit about building permit fees and how this works in the state of Michigan. Prior to the year 2000, every township, city, and village in the state was free to adopt and enforce its own building code. And back in that era, they were all a little bit different, and a contractor, building something in one community, would have to follow a set of rules that may or may not be the same in other communities. So about twenty-five years ago, the state of Michigan decided that it was best to adopt a single unified state construction code, and they did that, and they mandated that every municipality in the state enforce the same code. And they asked every municipality to raise their hand and say, "Do you want to accept responsibility to be the enforcing agency on behalf of the state code?" And those that did got to adopt their own building departments, like Independence Township did. Others said, "No, we're not interested," and it then defaulted to the county, if the county had one. Oakland County does not. Then it defaults to the state building department. So if you didn't have your own building department, your residents would go to Lansing to get their building, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits. It's as simple as that. So, Mr. Moran, as your building official and director of the department, is acting under state authority under the State Construction Code Act, which was first adopted back in, and implemented in 2000. That act, um, says, it has, it's very, very detailed, the state adopts a building code, a residential code, um, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing codes, which are typically referred to as the MEPs or the trades, if you will. There's a commercial code, residential, and a variety of other smaller codes in between, and it's Mr. Moran's responsibility under his state authority, granted through Independence Township, to make sure that that's enforced. The State Construction Act also says that building permit fees must, shall bear a reasonable, um, similarity to the cost of providing those services. In other words, you should be charging what it costs to provide those services, and that would include everything involved. Employee wages, all, all your employees' benefits, all of your computer software, your, your vehicle transportation, uniforms, uh, office space, overhead, the whole nine yards. So there should be some kind of a formula here in the township to determine what portion of office space and other infrastructure should be dedicated towards the building department to help come up with a formula to help you set your fees. As Mr. Moran indicated, we learned when we were brought on board that the fees haven't been adjusted since 2015. Just a quick check of the CPI, uh, it's gone up thirty-two percent since then. At the time this was written, which was late spring, early summer this year. So that's a pretty whopping increase to have to absorb. So in terms of fee methodology, we normally like to see how you're doing compared to some of your neighbors, either near or far, and average those out, and also compare you to what fees you would be charging if you followed the International Code Council Building Permit Fee Formula. The ICC is a nonprofit group, I think they're based in Colorado, I believe. They write and promulgate all of the building and trade codes throughout the United States. The state of Michigan adopts the building code that they take from the International Code Council. They make some tweaks that are customized for the state of Michigan, and they do the same thing for all the other trades, and then they put that code in place, and they tell every local building department that has accepted the responsibility to be the enforcing agency, "You shall, as of this date, enforce this code." State of Michigan is currently under the 2015 building code. It is soon going to be changing, I, I understand, to the 2021 building code, as soon as it clears some legal challenges, which, every code cycle, there are always legal challenges at various levels. So that will be on the horizon. As far as the trade codes, they, they vary. I think electrical is 2017, I'm not sure about mechanical and plumbing off the top of my head, but they're all different code levels. So what we do is, we talked with Mr. Moran, said, "Which neighboring communities do you feel is correct, appropriate, and important for us to compare you to?" And we then went out and we collected data from all of those other communities, and we have set up a model that's been tried and true. We've, we've applied this for all the fee studies that we've done, probably for the last ten years, where we compare the fees for three very common typical building scenarios. Two of them are residential scenarios, and one is a commercial scenario. I'll talk just very briefly. I mentioned this ICC permit fee multiplier. Here's how it works. You take the budget for the building department, in this case, I believe it's about five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. You determine what percentage of that budget you expect to recover from your building permit fees. I don't know what that is. That's for Mr. Moran and the board to determine, but we used eighty percent for the purposes of the, doing these calculations. Then we look at the construction value of all the new construction, which includes brand-new, brand-new buildings, additions, and remodelings that add on to the value of an existing structure. You take the construction value for the last three years, you average it, and then you do simple division between your operating budget and the percentage of that you expect to recover from the fees, divided by your construction value, and you come up with a fee multiplier. For instance, as an example, this is not Independence Township, if someone were, wanted to build a sixteen thousand square foot construction project, and it was a type II-B type of construction, uh, that would be valued according to the ICC charts at two hundred fifty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents a square foot. Multiply that by the permit fee multiplier, in this example case, point zero zero seven five, the, the fee for that, uh, commercial project would be thirty thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That covers your plan review, all the administrative costs, all the inspections, from the initial inspection, when it starts to go up, to the very final inspection to get the C of O at the end of the project. You're fortunate in that the BSNA software that you use, your, if you ever decided to use the ICC formula, you can put those calculations in it, and it will automatically generate the correct fees every time somebody applies for a permit. Now, here are the neighboring municipalities that were selected. Waterford Township, Oakland Township, Orion Township, Springfield Township, and the Village of Clarkston. In the packet, in our report on page three, there is a brief little graph to just give you a sense of the differences between those communities. There are four townships, and one, it's the Village of Clarkston, but they're actually a city. It's the city of the Village of Clarkston. We also took the average of those five communities, minus Independence, and used that as a, as a data point, as well as the ICC formula, if you, you were to use it as an additional data point. So, Independence Township is, uh, the third ranked in terms of taxable value against the others that were used, second in terms of population against the others that were used, and all the townships are approximately the same size, thirty-six square miles, give or take, and then the Village of Clarkston was the outlier. The three construction projects that were used were, number one, the residential new construction, building a new home, a two thousand five hundred square foot home with a four hundred and forty square foot attached garage, with a construction value of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The second example that was used was an addition remodel, new construction, permit and plan review fees based on a one thousand square foot addition with remodeling and a construction value of seventy-five thousand dollars. And then finally, a commercial project of eighteen thousand square feet with a value of four point five million dollars. Each of these projects are displayed, um, in the report on pages five, six, and seven. Each table displays both the building permit fees and the plan reviews fees from each of the individual sources. I would note that the International Code Council, the ICC, they actually offer plan review services, um, but their fees are way higher than your township would charge and pretty much any other municipality in Michigan would charge. We also displayed only the building permit fees on these charts. These do not include the P, fees for the trade permits, just, we're dealing just with building permits. In terms of comparisons, for the first scenario, the twenty-five hundred square foot house, Independence Township ranked number five out of seven, in terms of the data points. Oakland first, Waterford, then the ICC multiplier was third. The average of those five communities was number four, followed by Orion Township, and then Independence Township, Springfield, and the Village of Clarkston. So as you can see, Independence Township's fees for that same project compared to your comparable neighbors is extremely low. For the second scenario, the one thousand square foot addition at seventy-five thousand dollar value, Independence Township was second to last in terms of rank, in terms of, um, the permit fees that you're collecting for that same job compared to your neighbors across the street. And then finally, for the commercial job, Independence, um, ranked fifth out of eight, lower than Orion, Waterford, the ICC formula, and Oakland, but slightly higher than the average for those five communities, and a lot higher than the Village of Clarkston and Springfield Township. Based on all of this data that was collected and analyzed, and by the way, the actual fee study, all the calculations were done by Brent Strong from our office, Brent's the director of the Code Consultation Division of the company. He's got, I think, about twenty years' experience as a building official and building inspector. It demonstrates that the building permit fees being collected in Independence Township are significantly lower than the three most closest comparable township neighbors of yours. Based upon the close similarities between Independence and those three other townships, it's reasonable, I believe, to conclude that the permit fees here should be adjusted to not only be consistent with neighbors, but more importantly, to make sure that you're covering all the costs of providing those services. One of the reasons is, if you're not charging enough to cover those costs, that simply means, when I pull a permit to build my deck, my next-door neighbor is subsidizing the cost of my inspections and my permit, because it's coming out of the general fund or someplace other than building permit revenue, as a subsidy, if you will, if you can use that term. The other thing I wanted to point out was, um, in terms of accounting, in Michigan, not only does the Construction Code Act clearly state certain things in terms of use of permit revenue, there is also case law in Michigan involving some settled lawsuits. Here in this general area, one, the one cited in this report was with the city of Troy, but the city of Ann Arbor was also successfully sued by the Washtenaw County Home Builders' Association, because their fees were not reasonably what it costs to provide those services, either high or low, it could go either way. It's very important to know, the Michigan Supreme Court, when they settled this one case in particular, explained that when it comes to setting fees to cover your expenditures, there has to be a reasonable relation between the fees and the costs. That is critically important for a policy legislative board such as yourself to understand. It also says, in the Construction Code, not only the code itself, but in the state regulations that go with it, that building permit revenue may only be used to support the operation of the building department and for no other purpose. That's why most municipalities maintain a separate enterprise fund to track the revenue and the expenses that originate from the sale of those permits to homeowners and contractors doing business in the township. And with that, I would enter- And with that, I would entertain any questions, and then I know Mr. Moran has, has some more.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from board members?
I have a real question.
Sure. Trish O'Brien.
Our esteemed trustee Morocco, you're, you're a well-known builder in the community, and I wondered if you thought you might want to recuse yourself so that people don't think you're, you know, going to be mad at yourself for raising the prices. But it's your decision. I just don't know.
I don't think I need to. I think that it's long overdue, these increases. I've been working in a lot of communities, you know, I've been in the business 31 years. We've always been underfunded, I mean.
So you won't get mad at yourself later for raising?
No, I think that, I think that, I, I, I can tell you from being a builder that I know that Dave is understaffed. I know that we don't charge enough money. On the same hand, I like to say that I know that Dave and them will work on their days off and make sure that no jobs go uninspected, whether it's during business hours or not. And that's how we've always operated this township, under many building directors. But I paid, even with our increased prices, I, I've paid twice that amount in communities in Oakland County for the exact same thing, literally twice what we're about to increase to. So I think it's fair. I think it's reasonable. I think it's less than than most communities that I deal with in North Oakland County, the, the communities that seem to charge the most. And, and I think that we get, what I've seen is other communities, they escalate these huge fees, but then you get unlimited inspections. You know, where we have a limited amount of inspections, and then if you don't pass them because you didn't do what you're supposed to do, you pay a little bit more, and I think that's a fairer way to do it. If you, if you perform at the top of your game, if you get all your stuff done, you shouldn't be penalized at the rate that people who don't. So I, 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 I think that it's a very fair proposal. I don't know that it goes far enough if we start getting into, you know, funding the staff, Dave, you know, if we get into long-term rental stuff and we need more inspectors for that, and things like, you know, how your department can expand in the future. But I think that, I think from what I've seen that, and experienced in the township, that I think it's a fair amount. I think that we, if this is going to help us get another person, get some more staff in here, I don't think it's ridiculous. I don't think it's overstated, and I don't think we're taking advantage of everybody. And I think it's long overdue. If we haven't had an increase since 2016, I know the percentage that my construction costs across the board go up, material and labor. We're over $100,000 a house from beginning of COVID to end of COVID. Prices went up 100 grand. And everybody's feeling the pinch, so I don't think that, and I know Dave's been operating in the red since he walked in the door here, so it's, nobody wants to pay more, but we need to be fiscally responsible, make sure that we're covering the cost for the residents who aren't doing construction too, like you stated.
I, I, just real briefly, I'll just mention, when we dug into some of the data, I was personally shocked when we looked at, we talked about construction values, which is the value of, not the permit fee, but the value of the construction work going on in the community. And just so you know, when his staff issues a permit, they collect that information from the contractor, whether it's the homeowner or a licensed professional contractor. What is the value of this work being done? And they cross-track that against the ICC valuation charts to make sure it's in the right ballpark. In 2021, the construction value here was 31.1 million. In 2022, it was 67.1 million. Last year, it was 48.2, but guess what? The first six months of this year, 51 million. The first six months of this year was 3 million more than all of last year. So his staff, I would venture to, we haven't talked about this, but I bet you they're just running around trying to keep up the best that they can. But I will say this, Independence Township as a building department has a reputation for providing top-notch service, for their inspectors being very reasonable and helpful, and for being very low-priced, as you, as you mentioned.
Jim, trustee Ted.
Thank you, Supervisor Aliaga. I, I appreciate the fee study. This gives us some real tangible data to, to look at. This isn't just an arbitrary, you know, throwing, throwing mud at the wall and seeing what sticks. I appreciate the very thoughtful and deliberate intent here to, to provide some real data for the board because I think that's what drives us. I'll also say, no one, no one likes raising fees. No one likes raising taxes, but if I, if, if I have to look to a certain source of revenue, I'm a big fan of a consumption-type fee, and that's exactly what we're dealing with here. As you presented, this is, this is someone that's building, doing a remodel, commercial, private, what have you. And I don't think it's fair for the residents in the entirety to, to be bearing those costs. And I also think that Director Moran deserves to have an ample budget to afford, whether it be other staff, or whether it be to be competitive and paying staff commensurate with, with other communities. So I think, I think what's being asked is reasonable. We're talking, you know, nine, nearly nine years since we've seen any fee increases. Again, it's never, it's never a comfortable conversation, but we're asking about a user-based fee system here, and I'm inclined to support.
Thank you, Jim. That's a very good point. Also, I want to point out that we are facing the last four years a high inflation, you know? And we've raised prices, those fees for a long time. Since when I started working with Dave Moran two years ago, my office always was very helpful to work with the building department. And we were facing all these issues, and I'm glad that, you know, we're getting this in front of the board. And it seems like we're going to make it tonight. We're going to be making a good decision. And it's going to be very, like you said, Jim, we're going to be more competitive with other communities because, you know, we are on the, you know, we are getting less revenues, and we want to be sure that we're building this, getting the right amount of revenues.
Trustee Morocco had stated as well, there, there are other initiatives that I want to pursue in short-term rentals, long-term rentals. That's on the horizon. Those are some of the initiatives that I can't even look at now because we're so understaffed. So, and, and again, like trustee Tetter stated, you know, this is a market valuation of assessing fees and, and charging those people that are spending those mon, that money on projects, and that, that's where it should be targeted. So that's why I want to introduce, and it's in the new application fee schedule, or the, the, the department fee schedule, that it's market value-driven. So like, for example, if somebody's putting in a pool and it's a $10,000 pool, our current permit fee is 200 bucks. Now, if you put in a $150,000 pool, that permit fee is 200 bucks. And that's just not fair valuation. It's not equitable to our customers, our residents. So that's why I'm, I'm proposing a market valuation of projects being put in place, and whether it be retaining walls or, or exterior flatwork and patios and that kind of thing, that it requires permit, you know, replacing your roof shingles. So you've got a $10,000 roof or an $80,000 roof. It's the same permit fee. So we'll, we'll propose these, these, these dollars are proposing a base fee, but if you're over that base fee, then it turns to a market valuation, which is very equitable as well. 1% is very common in our, in our industry, whether it's residential, whether you're working off the ICC valuation calculations, or even on the commercial side. If you talk to any commercial contractors, they always budget 1% to 2% for your permit fees. So that's why it's consistently being utilized by other municipalities. Many municipalities use a 1% fee evaluation, so that's what I'm proposing as well. But only in certain instances. So you, it's all outlined in red and in italics. You know, the big change here is a new single-family application fee. We're going from 100 to 300. But if you look at this fee study, the average was $307. So we're not, you know, asking a premium. We're, we're just trying to get back on par. So that's, that's, across the board, whether you're looking at building permit fees, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, those are all on par, if not majority of them less than the other building departments that are utilizing this fee schedule.
Thank you. I guess we need a motion?
I move to approve the proposed building department fee schedule as presented with an effective date of January 1, 2025.
Okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Kerry.
Thank you, David.
David, thank you so much for your work. Thanks. Okay. Thank you. Okay, this is about a request to approve the out-of-state travel for Lauren Rinke, a public information officer, and John Elke from Independence Television Station Manager to attend to the government social media conference in Orlando, Florida. As you know, we always support educational training and support our employees. Our PR director is doing a fantastic job. We actually worked last week doing some tour in the fire department and the new upgrades, and it's good for the public to know what's going on in the township daily, and she keeps us up to date with Facebook, social media. And it's always some changes, and you know, this type of education will help our directors of PR or the manager for TV, John Elke, which by the way, he's doing a terrific job as well, to improve his skills, updates, and I think that's going to be beneficial. If you, Lauren, you want to tell us a little bit about this, or? Yeah. Any comment that we want to update the board?
Good evening. I do have a letter of support from John Elke, who cannot be here because he's running the meeting offsite. So I wanted to share that with you. And then if you have questions or if you have anything else you want to ask me, let me know. So just imagine that I'm John reading this. I would like to add my recommendation for the GSM Con conference as someone who attended on the township's behalf last year. The amount of knowledge that is spread across the three days was impressive. I found the different number of topics covered made this a great professional development option for not only myself, but others in the creative field who work for the township. I found it extremely useful to connect with so many other professionals from not only across Michigan, but the United States. It was inspiring to see that we here at Independence Township are doing some things right when it comes to marketing and social media department. But it also gave me an opportunity to step back and recognize some of the habits I've fallen into over my career and different ways I can correct those moving forward. This can be a beneficial conference for members of our team to attend so we can continue to grow as professionals and strive to improve the way we communicate with our citizens moving forward.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Somebody would like to make a motion?
I'd just like to, I'd just like to make a comment. I, I think that professional development is, is critical for our professionals. And I believe everyone that works for the township is a professional, and, and no one really can determine what that training looks like better than the individual, right? We can, we have maybe an idea, a recommendation, but it ultimately comes down to our township employees and township professionals. And I think professional development enriches and improves and enhances the skill sets of our workforce. And in fact, I was, I had to join last, last meeting virtually because guess what? I was at a professional development event at the University of Wisconsin in Madison. So I think, I appreciate the fact that you have, that you and John both have the interest and that you've identified something that you think is beneficial, and I'm glad you brought it before us.
And I will just add that John and I have been working collaboratively more and more together. So I think that this can only help us establish that relationship and figure out ways that we can collaborate more in the future to create engaging content for the residents and, and get them more engaged and increase transparency as well.
Thank you. Anyone else in the board? Trustee Morocco.
I'm going to move to approve out-of-state travel for Lauren Rinke, PIO, and John Elke, station manager, Independence Township Television, to attend the government's social media conference held in Orlando, Florida from May 19 to May 23, 2025.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Kerry. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. All right, next, the agenda. Budget operation analyst, Rick Jager. Good evening, Rick.
Good evening. Tonight, we've got budget amendment number 30 here. This is for increasing legal and health insurance. Two distinct, different things, obviously. The first one here, the general legal account isn't over budget yet, but it will be by year-end, and maybe even within the next couple of months. Charges to Keenan are fine and on track to come in under budget, but the Kelly firm is about $12,000 over budget, and that's only through the month of July. The overage comes from various items that have come up since January 1st. And because of what I am seeing here, we're requesting a budget amendment of about $100,000 to get us through the end of the year. May not use it all, but I think we need it to at least cover us and get us to that point. I actually did go through the seven months of bills that we do have. I do have a list of the different, a lot of things that have come up. And I can disperse that to everybody if you'd like to see the list that I've come up with. Again, this is just scanning through the bills. As you'll see, it's quite a variety of issues that are discussed with our legal team. This may not even be 100% complete because I spent about an hour going through this, and it's quite a bit of work to go through all these things. The second item that's on here is within the assessing department. We had one individual that actually was on a buyout program, and then they switched during the open enrollment last year. And I was never informed of that. And they actually went from a buyout to a family plan, so it's a big, big change. And it's actually putting the health insurance in that department. It will be over budget here real soon. So we're looking for about a $14,000 budget amendment there as well. Those are the two items that are up for approval tonight.
Any questions? Trustee Richie?
Yes. While you're there, Rick, I was wondering if you could maybe, is, you're asking for a $100,000 increase. Could you like categorize that and what that is compared to the total budget, total amount that was budgeted?
The total amount budgeted was 100,000, and now we're at 112, and we're just over halfway through the year with the bills. So that's why I decided just throw another 100 out there. Again, we may not use it. We may only use 60 of it. But I don't want to come back here in two more meetings and have to do it again, or get to the point where the bills haven't come in, we're past January, or past December 31st, and we can't amend any longer. Then we're going to be in a problem with the auditors. So I'm just trying to avoid that situation.
So this, we used the whole year's budget in approximately six, six months or so?
Seven months, yeah. Again, this is one of those things, because, you know, earlier in the year, we had an issue with the HR department and the legal, or the labor legal issue. And so I just wanted to get this in front of the board as soon as possible.
If this doesn't include the labor, this is, this is a general.
This is all general, yes.
I believe a few months ago, we had to, we had already exceeded, I think, within the first month, the budget.
It's a different legal budget.
Was that the legal budget?
It's a different legal budget.
Different legal budget. That was like HR budget? So this is general, more general legal.
That is correct.
Legal counsel. Do you, do you have, is, and I don't know how difficult this is, and I, it may not impact what we, you know, need to do because we need to pay our professionals, but a list, you know, maybe over the last few years, what was customary? Because this seems like, again, just, these are just highlighted themes or topics. But I just find it maybe troubling that we would hire legal counsel for this myriad of items. That's all. There's some that I, you know, again, that's, I know that's out of your purview. But what I'm asking is, is there a way to go back a few years and assemble something similar just so we have a point of reference? From my own understanding, not necessarily contingent upon tonight's decision, but.
Right, right. Yeah, I suppose some way that could be done, yeah. We just have to spend some hours going through the bills and looking at what's been covered.
Yeah.
Trustee Morocco, yes? Trustee Morocco, yes?
Let me word it in a different way. Do you anticipate this barrage of things that will need legal representation or counsel going into the future, or do you think that a lot of these are, one, let's call them one-offs, and we're not gonna revisit all of these line items again in the future, or this many?
I don't know if I can answer that question, 'cause I'm not involved with any of these issues. So I'm not sure which ones are ongoing, which ones were one timers.
Okay.
I couldn't tell you. I had to scan it through bills, and I picked off things that were mentioned several times, not just onesies or twosies.
And I only ask that, 'cause there's certain things on here that catch my eye that I wouldn't think that were, were legal issues for the township. But then another point, is there anything on this list of legal consulting that is going to generate revenue possibly? Or is any of this, are we suing anybody to recover any losses? Are we, is it, you know, was any of this money spent that, you know, to recover anything, do you know of?
Not that I'm aware of, but again, I'm not involved in these.
Fair assumption to say it's ninety percent consultation? Is that a?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is it mostly all consultation fees?
It's called general, general fees, general representation, I think it's called, if I'm not mistaken, is what you put on the bills. I know you do break it down by different departments and things like that.
Can you provide that this one thing?
I don't think we need to be asking Dan to, to talk about that anyway, 'cause he submits his invoices, and
Yeah.
if we had questions on that, we could have.
No, I'm just trying to see if it's something that we should move forward. Our budget would need to be adjusted if we felt that this was just kind of all, gonna clean itself up.
You'll never know.
Work through it. We never know.
You never know.
Yeah, either way, we're, we're in the hole, twelve thousand dollars, and the Kelly firm delivered services, direct rendered, and
We'll continue.
Well, it gets back to the same thing when we talked about when we had the labor adjustment. It's, there's no way we should go nine, ten months into the year and be so far out of budget without some notification. And this is, this is craziness that, that we, we're gonna use double the budget, and there's not been any notification or notice before this time, so.
Jose Kerry, you got a question?
Um, well, right on the MAF, it says the supervisor will explain, and I am going to jog people's memory. It wasn't a few meetings ago, it was supposed to be a presentation by you, or talked about, and it was taken off the agenda.
That was the, was the, the people that, that came today?
No, it was, it was about legal.
Well, this is what this
And we never revisited it.
No, it's just
Yeah, and I, I guess, I don't, I'm assuming the supervisor's office would have been the one that requests services the most. I mean, I'm speaking to maybe the, the three full times, or who, I don't know who has that discretion, but I, I would like at least a, a highlight of maybe some specifics, you know, and it's not Mr. Jager's job to, to answer to these, but he provided us a nice list. I, I'd just like to have a little bit of justification, because I think, I think our residents deserve to know why we're already, if forecasted correctly, pessimistically, we're gonna double, double our general legal budget.
Yeah, very possible.
So I would, you know, again, as the, as the MAF states, and I know the supervisor, I guess if you had any clarification on any of these items?
I cannot talk about sometimes, I cannot talk about the names of employees, individuals, I mean
Yeah, we don't need names.
You're right. I mean, it's, it's just why we summary like this, DPW, we have some issues there. Campaign finances, I, I don't know, I mean, I think that's different department. We have, I mean, the list give you an update right there, I mean, what, what, I mean, Sacha Barcrossing. We, it was a issue a few months ago. We looking into, you know, well, this is something that we discussed before, I mean, some issues, election issues, that's probably different department. Some of it is not just my department.
Lawsuits?
Yeah, lawsuits, and some of it probably came way before, I mean. There's tender there, that's coming from a few years ago. I was, some, some of it's not mine, I mean, Open Space Committee, probably is a request for a different, a different committee. Campaign finances is not mine, I mean, I, I, I mean, I can recognize some, but it's between different departments.
Okay, well, either way, I will make a motion for the fact that our professionals who gave us services need to get paid. So I will move to approve the budget, two thousand and twenty-four budget amendment number thirty is presented.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Sam?
Mr. Fisher will be presenting. Thank you, Jerry, for coming tonight and doing this again. Appreciate it.
Good evening, board members. Jerry Fisher, representing the Open Space Committee of the Township, the Residential Open Space Committee of the Township. And basically, this is a request that follows a presentation that Sam made in part last time, and I made in part last time to work on a revision of the planning unit development ordinance. Now, we, as a committee, we have worked in other directions. We've talked about and actually set up a lot of mechanisms for considering the recommendation to purchase property, which is an important part of this whole concept of open space preservation. But this is really something that we think can result in better development in the township. And better development really here, for this purpose, the PUD amendments that we've come forward with, essentially would enhance or promote the preservation of natural resources in the township, enhance the character of the township, and the result of those two together would be to increase the taxable value and market value of properties in the township. So we basically have not intended to create a detailed, a, a final ordinance amendment for the, for the township, but really, it was the only practical way, in other words, providing details, was the only practical way for us to communicate to, to the Planning Commission of the kinds of things that we think are important. We don't have the last word on this, obviously. We don't anticipate that, and we don't expect that, but we do think that some of these ideas are, are good ones, and, and that the Planning Commission may change these and, and develop other ones as well, other ideas as well, to improve this PUD ordinance, which was drafted many, many years ago. And, and it can be updated based upon experience at this point. And it, and it really removes some of the discretion that the, that the Planning Commission has in reviewing projects, and promotes more open space and vegetation for projects. So the board is not being asked tonight to approve a particular amendment. With those things in mind, the enhancement of the township, the board is being requested merely to refer this to the Planning Commission to determine, in their view, whether there is merit to this, and report back to the township board. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any question from board members, or? Claire Newick?
Jerry, or maybe it's a question for Sam. Does anyone know the last time the PUD ordinance has been reviewed by the Planning Commission?
I'm gonna say, it was probably forty years ago, thirty years ago. It was when I drafted it.
Not been updated since. Not been reviewed or updated since.
I don't think so. Not, not in any material way, that's for sure.
Just minor?
I, I'm gonna say if, if it has, there's probably been a minor.
Yeah, yeah.
And I guess I think I would follow it up, sorry, Paul, with, we haven't also had legal review of this, I don't believe. So I don't think.
I mean, if he's referring it to the Planning Commission, it'd be appropriate to do it after they've made their full recommendations.
Okay.
I mean, unless you want, I looked at it, I don't see anything to
Okay, I didn't know.
Okay, Sam.
Ron, you want to talk?
Ron, you first?
I was just gonna ask, are the items highlighted in yellow all additions, or are you just highlighting those areas? Some of them look like they've been added, some of them
Yeah, you know, this was not done in the usual highlighting format, because the person that did it did not have that capability on their word processor. But yeah, these are, the, the highlightings really represent the, the changes.
Okay, some of them are changes, but some of them might just be highlights.
Yeah, some are strike through.
And strike through.
I just wanna make a statement about it, I think for the resident, I mean, and, and the policy, the procedure. So as the Residential Open Space Committee has a subcommittee that looks at ordinances, that we can make suggestions to the community on how we think that certain words, goals, objectives could be highlighted. That's basically what this is. So, oh, we're, so there isn't anybody currently going through all of the ordinances and trying to update them, or see if they align with what our goals and objectives are, or anything like that. So it's kind of a task that the Residential Open Space Advisory Committee took on, so, you know, especially with Jerry, you know, and all of his expertise, and, and Planning Commission members on the, on Row Act, myself, and said, you know, we, we, we can go through and look at these and make suggestions, would be somebody doing it, not taking the time of the Planning Commission in a, in a, in a public forum on, on TV, and then make a suggestion to them. And basically, it's just to give them a little, a narrative to talk about, to say, hey, do you think this, you know, these words would help? If we add these, these, these line items, very small. And one of the most significant ones of this is, which is, that I think is D, which, when somebody comes in front of us and asks for a PUD, it means that they're not complying with the underlying zoning, which we all know. But the Planning Commission hasn't, is, a lot of times makes suggestions of what the person is, because, because they're presenting the PUD and asking us for it, they're making suggestions of what they would like the PUD to become, and those, the points. One of the main things of this does, is it says in here that the Planning Commission should be provided
There's a lot of Ds.
Oh, applications, D under
What page?
Seven, I think it is. I'm sorry. I'm having trouble seeing the lines, but, is it?
Make that C, C seven.
Procedure and review and approval.
So D right here, where, it says each state, each, okay. Basically, what I'm trying to say is that, being on the Planning Commission for so long, this would say, if someone comes to the township and asks for a planning unit development, the Planning Commission should be provided with a list of bullet points of things that don't comply, not what, just what they're trying to do. So it's the other side of the coin that isn't often presented, so you could compare the two face to face. And I think that's, you know, those little tweaks like that can make it easier for, for better decision-making and review. And also, the words that were being added to it, open space, green space, things like that. When you look at the master plan, you look at an ordinance, there's lots of, hundreds of pages of documents that you could be reading. You could be reading things about setbacks and things about other things, or you could be focused on some of these keywords, open space, green space, setbacks. And it's just a matter of having some trigger words that hopefully will promote different thought or preservation in them. There's nothing in here that would change the way, I don't think, and Ron can talk on that point, that would change the way that we handle a PUD or look at it. It just may be something that would, might not have popped into their head, or be a thought, or a process. So it's, it's a very minor suggestion for the Planning Commission to review, and I think it's, it's deliberate. We did that as a, as a, as a way of showing that we, we can come up with some thoughts that they could consider. And if they don't consider them, and they don't want them, then so be it. But somebody's at least going through them and trying to update them, and then giving them to them, and then they can get into the meat of it and the bones of it, and see if they want to amend them or make any changes to them. So it just kinda gets it moving.
Thank you. Sam, trustee Ron Ritchie?
Yeah, to go along with what Sam said, actually Chairman Scarborough, we talked about this at the last planning meeting a little bit, so he went over some of these points. I don't think he had the whole highlight, but he talked about something like on item three, like three A, it talks about, you know, preserving open space, natural resources. But then when you go down to number two underneath three A, it talked about natural resources again. And we're saying, well, in number two, what we really wanted to project or accentuate was, you know, protection and preservation of historic resources. 'Cause we already talked about natural resources higher up, but it's like we're, you know, it's almost like you want that bullet point to stand out more as, as its own, like the historical part compared to natural resources, which was already stated above it. So some of it is really cleaning up, so like Sam was saying, the, the person applying for the PUD, you know, they, they get the bullet points, and hopefully, they, they incorporate those items into their PUD, so. So I mean, we, we had some discussion on this. We didn't have the whole document. Chairman Scarborough just kinda was reading out loud that, you know, he wanted to bring this forward at some point in time, so.
Rachel Brown?
I do think at some point, the board needs to discuss the makeup of the Open Space Committee, because there are three members of the Planning Commission that sit on it. And I have some concerns that, that the objectives of the Residential Open Space Committee, with three members of the Planning Commission on it, making, and then coming up with things they wanna do to change things, our authorities, the Planning Commission, already has. And so it just concerns me that we go into this, into this position by sending this over there, where there's already three people on the Planning Commission that apparently wanna do this. So why, I don't understand why they would need the Township Board to do it. They can already do this. I believe the Planning Commission can take up and decide they wanna do something like this. Do they have to have our input to do that, Dan?
I mean, it would be helpful. I'm assuming, I'm assuming that when it gets to the Planning Commission, you might have some assistance from Dick Carlisle, your planner, to review this for his input and/or legal input.
No, I understand that part. My question is
Well, the board referral would kind of authorize those expenditures. But you're right, the Planning Commission can take up
So we have three members of the Planning Commission who have already, I believe unanimously, voted that they wanted to bring this to the board and ask us to do this. I don't know why they're not just taking it to the Planning Commission themselves.
That's not the path that we have, Paul, that we were directed, that we're a recommending body to the Township Board.
I understand that, but there's three members of the Planning Commission who could do it without any help from us. And I, so I just, I don't like things to be so complicated. That's my, my first point. And I do think that there's some concern about the appearance of having three Planning Commission members sitting on this other committee whose, whose really goal is to try and maintain open space in the community. Because I wouldn't want someone who's trying to develop anything here, try to look at that and say, well, they're over here, they're already, they already don't want me to develop my product. I'm just saying, the perception is, to me, would be a concern. So the other piece in here that I, that I wanna make sure I understand is there's language in the, in here indicating that some authority of this board would not remain. It says, and this is on page, page four, and I'll read the highlight. The Township Board, in its discretion, after recommendation by the Planning Commission, shall resolve all ambiguous, all ambiguities as to applicable regulations. However, significant setbacks, open space in landscape areas adjacent to streets, roads, highways, shall be established and maintained as part of the plan. I read that to mean that this board wouldn't have the authority to say it's different.
No, the board would always have the final
That's not what this says. That's not what this says.
Well, the, the recommended changes, I'll let you...
Mr. Harvey, may I speak of that, essentially what it's saying is that the board adopts the ordinance and adopts the standards, and this is really a message to the person that is preparing the plan, they have to know that it's gonna be in accordance with these standards, that the board isn't gonna change the, all of the plans and standards as part of the review process, that the, that you've already established the standards, and when they prepare the plans for the development, it has to be in accordance with those standards, and to the extent that they ask for a deviation, they have to, they have to call it up, and that's a specific way that they can, they can, uh, change the standards, but the, but the board, they have to know that the board isn't gonna do it, the board has already established the standards.
But the board can't do it, right? Because otherwise, why would I put in here that we shall, why would it say we shall resolve all these things, however, not these ones, that says to me, if the planning commission puts it together and they send it to us, we can't weigh in on that, and why would the planning commission be able to send us something that we couldn't weigh in on? Am I misreading it?
Well, I think, I think to some degree, to some degree, it, it needs refinement, this needs refinement, this is, remember, this is, this is a bare bones suggestion, because we didn't wanna be in a position to say that we're second guessing the planning commission, we're just giving ideas to the planning commission, so this is, this is not anticipated to be any final language in ordinance.
So if we send this, Dan, are we, does this mean the township board is recommending anything related to it?
No, I mean, I'm just, okay, so I'm just reading the motion, and the motion is to approve forwarding the PUD ordinance amendments to the planning commission for review, so you're not making any comments pro or con to it, um, to your point, I mean, I think actually, this is probably the better approach, I, I appreciate your comments with regard to having three planning commissioners and it almost being a foregone conclusion, that's a legitimate point, but in terms of what the open space committee, and I've not been involved in it, is doing, they should act separate from those three members just going back to the planning commission, completely bypassing this and saying, hey, let's consider this, at least they brought it to the board for a recommendation for the planning commission to review, and that's, I think that that is the more appropriate approach.
And having three members on there is something that you can, that's right, you can change.
Well, that's right, yes, as I suggested.
Trustee Morocco?
I'd like to say that we've had that discussion on the open space committee, we've got, um, and we, um, we've got new appointments coming up at the end of the year, things are, you know, we don't wanna start, we don't know how it's going to shake out yet, um, in December, who's gonna be, uh, terms are gonna be reappointed, whose terms aren't gonna be reappointed, there may not be three people, uh, on the open space committee in December, uh, or in January, I personally like the idea that the planning commission, um, members, uh, and the open space committee, I don't think it's a foregone conclusion that we all want better open space and we all want better developments, you know, I don't think that it hurts the developer that I, I think they should get, in my opinion, in a perfect world, they should get the feeling that everybody involved in the township has that same mindset, that we want more open space, we want better development, I don't care what board you sit on, you know, that, that the message to be sent is, we want good development in the township, and that's all, and, uh, put protections in place, and, uh, you know, so I don't, I don't think any of this hinders what a developer can ask for, they can still ask for anything they want, uh, and we can provide them and grant them anything they want under the PUD, this is just a matter of getting their mindset when they go to apply for the PUD, to try to align them what they should anticipate when they get there, that we're, that we've got goals and objectives for open space, uh, and we focus on that, I think, that's how I perceive it, that's my, that's how I perceive it.
Just one quick, I mean, my, my assumption is that if the planning commission is going to open up a review of the PUD, it's going to go beyond these, these recommended changes for open space, I mean, there, it hasn't been updated for thirty years, there's probably gonna be a full review involving a whole lot of issues, so...
Not many, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, well, it's his ordinance, so he doesn't wanna change anything, but, um, but it needs to be updated, so that's, and that's what the planning commission is there for, so...
And, and just to quickly state, that's what residential open space advisory committee identified, that we think it's time to review the PUD documents, and we would like the planning commission to consider doing that, and here's just a couple suggestions, it was made very clear to us that we don't write ordinances, we don't format them as an ordinance, that's not our position, we're ju, we're trying to walk a fine line of, how do we make some suggestions, um, for them to consider without writing ordinances or putting it, you know, verbatim or anything like that, so it, it was quite a juggling act to just get to this point, we felt this was the cleanest way to do it, in front of the board, not backdooring it through the planning commission members, and just say, hey, we've got some suggestions, would you be willing to pass it on to them for review, now, if they don't wanna take it up, if they don't have a budget to take it up, if they're not ready to take it up, we don't have any control over that, we're just making a suggestion as an advisory committee.
With all due respect, I, I'm not sure, you know, with the planning commission being so busy, I'm not sure they would have initiated this.
Right.
I suspect they wouldn't, and so, we're like, uh, Jiminy Cricket on somebody's shoulder, saying, I think you ought to take this up and, and look at this, it'd be helpful.
Bless you.
Agree.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yeah, just, I guess go back to the procedure point, I think it's best to have, have that recommendation come to the board, because if, if going, you know, not just looking at this one item, but going forward, if there's something that you want the planning commission or somebody to do, wh- whoever it might be, if there's money involved, obviously, then the board needs to wa, to weigh in on, you know, we're, we're supporting this and we wanna go down this road, so, so I think the, the procedure of coming, you know, the open space bringing the recommendations to the board, I think is the, the proper thing to do, in my mind, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think this is the, the proper flow, come, come before the board, I do, I do share, um, Treasury of Brown's concerns about three, three members on the ROAC.
Sure.
Um, and I would say this township is an, has an embarrassment and britches in terms of people willing to step up and serve on committees, right? It's, it's not like there, we ran short, I mean, I, I reviewed probably a few dozen applicants for various committees, and we have planning commission members arguably second only to the board, the most important appointed position in the township, and there are planning commission members that are on three committees, not just ROAC, so this is a separate matter and we'll have to address that next go around, right? I sup, I support the spirit of, of revisiting and reviewing the PUD, I'm not gonna let that slow the train down, but I do think, you know, when we, when we get to that point and we're looking at new members, I just think it, not only a conflict of interest perhaps to have more than one planning commission member, but I also think that we have so many residents looking to volunteer, and they're being pushed aside so that one person or two or three people can serve on multiple committees, I just don't think that's appropriate.
Now, just as you, so you know, that Joe Suter, who is the chair of the open space committee, was put on the planning commission afterward.
Right, and then, and then there's, there's perhaps an opportunity, um, whether, whether it's required is another question, but to step down and, and say, as a, you know, I, I think it's incumbent upon the individual to recognize that it's not appropriate and there's other people willing to step up and fill that void, so whether it's ROAC, Parks Rec, seniors, planning commission, there are multiple, multiple planning commission members serving multiple roles, and it does, it does give an appearance of stacking the deck, 'cause you're only having to woo one person over to, to, and again, we're the last stop on the train, as we demonstrated last meeting, but still, the planning commission wields a lot of power.
Yes, and Jim, um, Jerry is right, what happened is during the appointments, when Joe Suter was in the open space committee, he also applied for the planning commission and he got appointed, and then he become a, a third member in the planning commission that is there, so I, I asked them through, um, uh, was Scarborough, Mr. Scarborough, I let him know that, you know, we have some concerns about having three members in both, uh, boards, he's aware, and he was talking to the other two individuals to see if somebody's willing to step down, but there's nothing that I can do to make them, or tell them, hey, you need to step down, I cannot do that, I can suggest, like we are suggesting right now, it has been suggested to them, but still, um, you know, those three individuals make a decision to step down.
Yeah, I mean, I think as, uh, having the authority, you know, as supervisor, no, you can't necessarily force someone, but as a condition of appointment, I need you to step down, I mean, I don't know if that's, that's appropriate, but I'm gonna appoint you to the planning commission, I need you to understand, I can't have more, more than one, 'cause you have, you know, Mr. Suter, Ms. Billings, Mr. Scarborough, all on ROAC.
No.
No, Billings is not, there's no, Jim.
No, it's Tom, Tom Paitel.
Tom Paitel, okay, but, but the point is, maybe we need to make, make, if, if, if we need to do something statutorily, you know, that you can't serve on more than one committee, or maybe just make that limited to the planning commission, then we do that, because I think it's that important, I really do.
It, it is important, Paul pointed out, and I agree, I notified to the three individuals about this, and no one did step down, they still wanna be in the both committees, maybe...
Some of their terms are up this year, so it doesn't mean it's gonna play out yet, you know?
Right.
We were kinda waiting to see what happened.
This is something that was addressed before, I let them know, and then, they're still gonna still move, it's nothing, like I says, I can no, make them do something like that, I mean, if you ask me, the right approach by ethics will be somebody to resign, but they don't want, I mean, the notification is there, I let them know, you know?
Yeah, 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 I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm not pointing any fingers, I'm just saying, I think it's a structural thing we need to address, and I, I concur with Treasurer Brown, but at the same time, this, this is long overdue, let's, let's have a PUD review by the planning commission, see what they come up with, and go from there.
All right, somebody would like to make a motion?
Real quick, should we, should we make a motion to ask them to review these amendments, or just leave out the word amendment, they could, this'll be with it, but they're reviewing the whole PUD, we won't short sell them, will we?
No, I think...
So I'll make a motion, move to approve forwarding the PUD ordinance amendments to the planning commission for review along with the entire PUD.
Sure.
Support.
Great idea.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Sure.
Thanks, Jerry.
Carrie, we have to make a motion for closed session.
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen point two six eight D regarding the purchase of real property, and for the purpose of discussing a confidential legal opinion regarding an appeal pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight one H, to also include, uh, the township assessor, Kim Fegley, and, uh, attorney Stephanie Marita.
Support.
All those in favor, oh, Rob, Rob.
Clerk Newbeck, yes, Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried, uh, it is nine twenty. Motion carried. Uh, it is nine twenty.
Back to session and I.
How many come motion to return from closed session and resume the regular meeting at nine fifty six P M?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Who's not here?
Yes, Paul, yeah. Okay. All right, moving on, we don't have any communications or anything, I mean, we don't have any decisions or communication, I feature again the annual report. Oregon County Chair of Department September twenty twenty four. Elections Commission September twenty three, twenty twenty four. Residential open space advisory community September eleven twenty twenty four. Board member comments, anyone? Okay, any done motion to adjourn?
No adjourn.
Support.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks.
Three minutes to spare.